Newish.
Newish.
Renewed. New again?
Yes, please come on. How do you wish to do this? I guess you should face. All right. Face me. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Missouri. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for the school district of Springfield R-12. County of Greene, State of Missouri. To the best of my abilities so help me God. Congratulations.
It is time to elect officers and outgoing president. Do you have any comments before we begin that process?
No, I don't have any comments. I'm ready to make a nomination.
All right. Is there a nomination for board president?
Well, yes, I do have a nomination for board president. I nominate him, Rosenberg.
Second?
Very good. So we have a nomination in a second. Are there any further nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We will move forward. Mr. Rosenberg, you will elect the vice president and other officer positions.
I guess we have to change chairs.
You can move over if you like.
It's fine.
I guess it's fine. That's our guess. I know. Can we turn on mics now?
I have a really hot mic.
Yeah, we got a really hot mic.
This is an exciting day.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a nomination for vice president. Can I hear a nomination for vice president, please?
President Rosenberg?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Dr. Lena Leonard for vice president.
Dr. Lena Leonard, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Are there any other nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And next we go on to the next officer. Now, this one is for treasurer. Typically, we have, in the past, we have nominated, and Carol has served in that role. I'll just leave it as that. Is there a nomination for treasurer?
I may be Carol Murray, treasurer.
Jerry.
Continue as treasurer.
Jerry moves for Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further nominations for treasurer? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carol is elected as treasurer. And last, as secretary, and in the past Kathy has served in that role functionally and officially. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Kathy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations for secretary? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Kathy as secretary say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the board elects Kathy as secretary. All right, so.
It's close.
So we adjourn this meeting, and we will now move into the other meeting. Give me a moment, and I will probably give everybody a moment to open the next meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
No, I threw myself out. Not to start. It's okay.
Okay. This is cool.
I'll find it.
Okay, there we go. And the.
Just trying to move out of the.
Yeah, keep moving your stuff away.
Penthouse.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, so Kathy, you'll show that all board members are present. And just like a prayer before worship, let's do the pledge of allegiance. All are invited to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Next is the approval of the agenda. And I had the recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Some of it.
Thank you, Elena. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Next is public comments. And these are public comments to address agenda items. We do have a speaker, and before I invite the speaker to the podium, I'll read the agenda item. It says, "The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being addressed." It is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker, and will be timed by the board secretary. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in an open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with speakers during this meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to Kathy, the board secretary, and she will distribute them to us. We have one speaker on agenda items, and that's Pat Scott. Good evening, Pat.
Thank you. Good to see you. Congratulations on your win. Thank you. Well done. Spent a lot of money, and I hope it works. How many of you saw the news leader coverage in the paper Sunday about how you're going to implement the new election? How many of you saw the letter from the two high school students from Hillcrest? Please, I'd like to see a show of hands if you saw it. Thank you. I'm going to read that now because this addresses curriculum, Chromebooks, cost and design of buildings. Our names, the title of it is Focus of Profess: Work Should Be to Help Students. Our names are Madeline and Abigail. We are both seniors at Hillcrest High School and A-plus tutors at Fremont Elementary. With Proposition S bond passing recently, we're celebrating the start of a new chapter for many SPS schools, especially Hillcrest. But with this comes a responsibility to the SPS administration and hired staff to produce safe, secure, and functional schools. From our time at Fremont, we have witnessed just how ineffective their new building has become. This building has all the bells and whistles, but the students and their test scores are suffering. With so many distractions, students have trouble focusing and completing their work. Both of us tutor in different areas of the building. I'm so proud of these girls. Have no idea who they are, but so proud of them. Another in a fourth and fifth grade classroom. This classroom is one long room and is placed with 40 students, packed with 40 students. This is a challenge, and in of itself, combining two classes for lack of room is hurting the students' learning. Although it is the higher functioning fourth graders and the lower functioning fifth graders, these students are in different parts of life. This has always been my concern with these Title I schools, and I think this board and this administration completely ignored in the designing of these last two new schools, Sherwood and Fremont. The fifth graders are deciding which middle school to attend and choosing classes, while the fourth graders are excited to rule the elementary school. Chromebooks are part of the problem. In the past few years, SPS students have been providing Chromebooks to help students learn practical technology skills and to aid in advanced teaching techniques. While these have surely prepared SPS students for their future, they have also taken away basic skills that are needed in everyday life. Our tutoring students and many others are spending time on gaming websites, searching inappropriate things despite the efforts of SPS to prevent this kind of activity. Students' hands hurt after writing three sentences. Students' hands hurt after writing three sentences, but they also cannot type. Instead, they use a voice function with the newer Chromebooks where you can speak into the laptop and it will type your words for you. Now, I'll digress from their letter just a minute. I think you're in the process of ordering new Chromebooks. Whoever's in charge of curriculum, whoever's in charge of this, I hope you can revamp that quickly because the curriculum is not working, especially at these Title I schools. These kids, 17, 18-years-old, recognize this. The teachers that I talk with recognize it, and I'll tell you later why I think they're afraid to speak up. The art room is the epitome of modern design, yet it's completely impractical. Actually, it isn't even a room, it's a hallway. There are no boundaries or separation for the rest of the school, and the students take advantage of it. Students roaming the hallways stop to chat with their friends. Upset students run up and down the hall. This happens so often that only naturally focused children regularly complete their work. Most kids cannot focus, follow directions, or behave while in the space. We love the students and staff at Fremont and are grateful to be able to tutor there. When Fremont was remodeled, it was much needed, just as it is now for the other 39 projects. Now the students have a creative and beautiful school to attend. Our hope for the passing of the proposition is that the Springfield schools can focus on these safe, advanced schools. My time is up, but I hope every one of you will copy. If you don't get the news leader, and very many don't anymore, you can hit your print button, copy that. That is shameful that we have two students that are pointing this out, which is so true of that school and Title I school. And yet, the next part of the Springfield public, of the news leader is that the schools are going to get the input of the teachers and administration before they design these schools. Just as when Fremont was designed, I think they threw away $500,000 worth of plans so they could plan Fremont as it is now. And I know teachers that left there. They said, "We didn't." And we're told by administration, "If you don't like it, go somewhere else." Well, we don't like it. I don't like it because it's not good for our Title I students, it's not good for learning. And I applaud these girls, and I hope, I don't know of one thing in there that's not true. So I would hope that you would use this as a guideline with whoever's responsible for curriculum in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. Got to get my screen back up. There we go. Next item is an information or report. The executive director of Innovation and Information, Ben Hackenworth, and director of Blending Learning, Nicole Lemon, will share an update on the status of the launch program. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, it's my pleasure to join Dr. Lemon tonight in bringing you what's our two-year update on launch. Tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the history of virtual learning in Springfield. You would have heard some of this in the past, but I always think it's good to kind of walk you back through that. We'll talk a little bit about what's happened over the last two years, how we've grown, what our catalog looks like now, what partnerships look like, and then what we think our next steps are in this space. So going back to the origins of virtual learning in Springfield, 2012 is when Dr. Lemon basically came out of the classroom and began this work. It began with Dr. Lemon, a single developer, and in 2012, they developed three of our first courses. It was physical education, personal finance, and government. Over five-year spans from 2012 to 2017, the team grew slightly. We added a couple of developers, but 48 courses were developed along the way. At that time, two years ago, that made Springfield, we had the largest district-developed catalog in the state. So a great deal was learned during that time, a great deal of experience, and a very robust catalog emerged. It was in 2017, about winter of 2017, that we really were presented with a statewide opportunity. And it was really focused on the fact that the legislative and the political climate was really pushing charter school expansion, particularly virtual charters that could start very quickly and get ahead of us very easily. So what we did is we came to you in the spring of 2017 with an idea. The idea was to invest in the development of a more comprehensive catalog. Take what we had already started, what we had learned, expand the development team, and build something that was comprehensive and robust. Additionally, we wanted to partner with districts across the state to do this work. We really believe that linking arms with other districts who are facing these same challenges, leveraging what we had already learned and what we had done was the best way to approach this challenge. And we wanted to create a product and a collaboration that was higher quality than what was out there in the for-profit market. Those were really what our focus was when we originally came to you. The goal was to improve access across the state and to keep Missouri resources in Missouri. That's really what we were focused on. So we came to you in the spring, we had that conversation, and I want to show you a slide that kind of depicts what our next steps were. We came to you in the spring, we had that conversation, we went back to our Go-CSD partners, and you're familiar with Go-CSD, the regional collaboration that we have, and we presented this idea to those superintendents. Overwhelmingly, they loved the idea, they wanted to partner, and we were able to come back, actually, two years ago to this meeting, present that information to you and their desire to partner. And it was at that meeting that we received a commitment from you to lead this work on behalf of the state of Missouri. From that meeting came Launch. We evolved from SPS Online, and this was the tag that we developed. We're a solution to high-quality online learning options designed, developed, and delivered by Missouri educators for Missouri students. And we believe deeply in those three things. It's one of the things that we believe differentiates what we're doing with Launch from other for-profit providers. The curriculum is developed by expert teachers in collaboration with our content experts in our curriculum department. The courses are developed by Missouri teachers using Missouri learning standards, and all of the content is delivered. That's really what sets Launch apart from other providers out there. So that really takes us from where we were in 2012 to where we were two years ago. I'm going to ask Dr. Lemon to come up, she's going to share with you, and you've heard this before, her passion for what we're doing and the work around virtual learning, what's happened in those two years, which has been really exciting, and where we think we're headed from here.
Thank you for the time this evening to give you a two-year update. So again, some of this will be repeat, but I think it's always good to start with our why, so our beliefs for Launch really start with, we know that students' opportunities should not be limited by their zip codes. We had an issue with this in Springfield Public Schools, and we still do. So we have, I'll give you a Japanese class, for example. So Japanese historically was only always offered at Kikapu because we are fortunate to have one very talented Japanese teacher. So because of Launch, we were able to expand that not only to the students of Springfield, but to the state of Missouri. So that's one example. You've heard from the principal from Albany and her passion around how we've helped those students who really don't have access to courses. Today, I was talking to the Willard superintendent, who is struggling to get foreign language teachers. So we're seeing this as an issue across the state, and it really serves as that foundation for Launch. Teachers are important to this work. So as we continue to have conversations around the state, most districts are just using a software provider that doesn't have a teacher behind it. And Launch has teachers behind the work that we're doing. So we continue to partner with teachers, not only from Springfield Public Schools, but from all over the state of Missouri. So this is exciting work, and we aren't a software company, we're a school district working together. So the collaborative approach is also really important. So linking arms as a state and saying, "We've got this legislators, we don't need a virtual charter school in our state," I think speaks really loud and clear. We're 166 partners strong, so we're sending that message that this matters to our school systems, that we can do this together if we choose to continue to work together. So my why started in 2012. I use this slide frequently, but I do want to draw your attention to some updated data. So last week, I had the privilege of attending a conference that went through the Chloe 3 Report, which is the update on data that we're seeing out of higher ed, particularly around the growth in virtual education. So statewide virtual, statewide universities reported an 81% increase in virtual course enrollments last year. So this cannot be ignored. We know that students are going to need these skills in when they get to college. I know it's a passion of several of our board members, and it continues to be the work that's driving Launch. So that conversation that Dr. Hackenworth referred to in 2017 became a reality in Senate Bill 603. So I know we've talked a little bit about this several times, but MoCap is a reality, and we know that that catalog will soon have for-profit providers in it. Those conversations are continuing to happen around the state. So we know that we have to have an answer for this as school districts. What are we going to do? So we are really proud of that last bullet point, that Launch courses meet Missouri statute for virtual education as an approved virtual course provider and are MoCap eligible. That's a big deal in its work that started in 2012 and has continued to meet the legislative requirements around this piece of legislation.
Nicole, so I know we understand that, but talk a little bit more what you just said about for-profit providers.
Sure.
And what that means in terms of what we are doing.
That's right. So the biggest difference between for-profit providers and what we're doing first starts with our teachers. So while those teachers have to have a Missouri certification, they do not have to live in the state of Missouri or work for Missouri School District. So they could live outside of the state of Missouri, so that money goes, you know, to their pockets. So I think that's the first place to start, is with teachers. The second place is around the standards. So we talk about curriculum, it's important if we're preparing students to take those into course exams. If we want online classes to match seated classes, virtual course providers can do a keyword search on standard and say they apply. But we actually work with our curriculum department, assignment by assignment, every single thing is aligned, and on every document, we can show full alignment. So those are the two places we start, and then we're not making a profit. So anything that we, and you'll see that tonight, anything that we get for Launch, we reinvest back into our own infrastructures or back into our own staffing needs. So I think those are the biggest differences. You know, the largest provider of virtual education is K-12 Online. Their CEO makes $6.5 million a year. That is publicly traded on Wall Street. So, you know, we can go all the way to, those are truly companies, those are corporations that educate children, and they answer to shareholders, not, you know, boards of education that we know care about children.
That's what we see advertised often.
That's right. That's a big one. Correct. Any other questions on Senate Bill 603 or where we are with this currently? So this is our enrollment trend. We haven't brought you this chart for a couple of years, but I thought it would be good for you to see, when you talk about exponential growth in organizations, what that looks like. You'll see the big jump in 2018, which is really when the investment from Launch kicked in. So that's when our catalog increased. In a minute, you'll see the difference between our students versus external students. But our students are still our biggest customer. So they took advantage of your investment with increased opportunities, increased courses, removing the barriers that we removed, and honestly, increased support. When you have a full-time counselor and you have the team that we have, more students are going to take your courses. And then you can see the growth this year, so we've handled that well. We continue to be complimented on not only our quality, so I mentioned at the last board meeting I spoke, that we have two Quality Matters approved courses now. So when you ask for quality, I take that very seriously because of the investment we've been able to do now.
I guess that's something, when I was listening, that I really want to focus on for a minute. I would not have a problem with there being industry out there that made a ton of money on this. That is not my chief complaint about the private industry that's involved in this. It's the lack of quality. I want to make sure that we're providing something that we can be proud of and that is giving our students a learning opportunity that puts them in a place to do whatever they want to do next. So if I could just switch around the way you listed that, I think the quality is the number one thing that you're bringing, and they could, they'd be fine with me if they made that kind of money if it had the same kind of quality, but it doesn't. So this one's what you're ordering.
Deal.
Thank you.
So the next slide.
Of course, I just wanted you, from my perspective, that's critical.
Great. So the next slide will outline for you what internal versus external looks like for us. So again, I point to 2018, the bulk of those enrollments were still internal. Even this year, the bulk of our enrollments are still internal enrollment. So while we have been able to invest statewide, those benefits have mostly benefited our students. So I do want to talk about projections. So projections, we have based on keeping internal enrollment about the same. So while we've continued to grow, we think we're about at the top of that now. We may grow a little in middle school, but we wanted to be conservative with our projections. But you will see the statewide growth. That's based on our partners told us an estimated number of enrollments for summer, so they told us what they think they will be enrolling. And then we've done a 20% increase for fall and spring. So that's the projections as they are right now. Again, we continue to be conservative with those as we ask for more funding for the program.
I think this is, to me, a really critical slide because my questions, and I've asked them, and a number of you have heard the questions, it's not about Launch itself. I mean, I'll admit, I'm frustrated that Launch has to save us from a Senate bill, right? That doesn't seem to be the way that public policy ought to work, right? We're doing this in order to prevent the worst potential implications of legislation. But at this point, I think we're at an inflection point because here, the projection in 2020 is that the majority of students served will not be SPS students. And that's not intrinsically a problem for me. I think it is a strategic question for the district that the board needs to grapple with, whether that is fundamentally the responsibility of SPS, or are there other options? The answer may be to the first of those questions, yes, that is our responsibility, and we ought to do that. But I don't want us to simply assume because it's growing and growing and growing that it is necessarily will always be SPS responsibility to do this. We're doing extraordinary things. This is not a criticism. But I think from a board perspective, I think part of our fiduciary and strategic responsibility is to figure out what we think Launch ought to be as an SPS entity. So that's.
That's why we wanted to show you kind of where it's going, and the growth trend projecting, because it is a different thing next year than it is this year. And we want to show you the fiduciary components, right, and the budget, how that trends with it, so that you can give us feedback. Because in order to do 2020, it's not what we are doing this year. You have to invest in other places in other ways. It's going to go into teachers, it's going to go into partners, it's going to go into core infrastructure. So you'll get all of those kind of things, and we want your feedback regarding that, those questions, I think.
And I think.
Why did they tell you their external enrollment was going to all of a sudden triple in a year when actually the number of districts hasn't changed since then? Why did they tell you?
That's a great question. So we, yeah, so we get partners every week, and some of them have not had the opportunity to enroll students yet. So we got a partner last week who will not be actually even starting enrollments with students until the summer. So because our partnership is rolling and ongoing, and we know, especially at the high school level, schedules tend to be set this time of year for next year, we have very big districts like Fort Zumwalt, who just are just now starting to join us this summer. So that's why this year's a little bit smaller as our enrollment has to catch up to our membership.
Because that 19 number is last year's summer enrollment.
That's right.
So really, only members that would have joined for April of last year would have participated. So you've got nine, 10, 11 months, or actually 12 months right now, 12 months of new membership that is feeding through that projected enrollment for summer. That number has grown, that enrollment, or that membership has grown.
This time last year, we had 64 members.
We have 166.
Versus 166 now.
So it's more the number of districts rather than the number of students in those districts?
Combination of both.
Yeah.
But I would imagine that what you're going to see is a curve among our partners that looks like our curve two or three years ago.
That's right.
That it's a slow adoption, but then it's. That it's a slow adoption, but then as more students get on and the word gets out among the students, it starts to say, yeah, I can do that, too.
And some of them have had their own programs, right, and they've had 10 courses, but now they have more courses, right? Because they're either going to have a full course suite from us, or they're going to have a full course suite from MoCap, which is what the state will be producing in the next month or so. So, and we can't, and districts can no longer say no unless they can prove it's not in the best interest of the child, which is a pretty high standard, as we adopted the policy, you know. So to your point, Tim, I think you are right, that it is going to scale across the state, because the law allows it for it to happen now, and there's going to be more access to more providers than ever before, and more access than they had in their home districts.
Jill, did you have a question?
Well, I'm more, it's more of a comment, because Charles and I, and several of us have been having these conversations for a long time, so I kind of feel like I want to give my alternative view of it. We all know how much I enjoyed being the president here, but one of the things about being the president is that I was the one signing off on all of those agreements with the different districts that joined, and I have a very different view of it. First, I'll remind you what I frequently say around here, which is that I feel it needs to be a goal of ours, that every one of our graduates has had an opportunity like this, because I think it adequately prepares them for college. And we both work in that atmosphere, and whether you like it or not, and believe me, I did not like it at first. Sometimes I'm not really strong on change, especially when it has a technological component. But the reality is, it's there, and it's not right of us to send our kids off to the next thing without having them knowing how to do this. But the second thing is, I was proud every single time I signed off on one of those agreements, whether it was a really large district or a really small district, because I'm proud of being a leader in this, and I'm proud of the fact that we are helping kids all over this state be able to take Japanese, or German, or some of the smaller districts that can't provide the kind of science that my friend over here, she wants me to mention advanced biology, she never lets me get away with that. But, I mean, I have to tell you, I had such a different view of it. It brings me a lot of pride that we had that vision, and we are providing something of this, again, with my quality, because anybody can do this, but it's the quality that I think is so impressive about how you've done it. So I want to say I continue to be really impressed and excited about it, all the while, saying the same thing that most of us have been saying all along. I actually, the only word you've said tonight that I am wondering why you keep saying is why we're making conservative estimates, because we were concerned in the beginning that this was going to be, boy, if you build it, they will come. And I'm not really good at math, but I think that that has come true in a big way. So frankly, I'm not sure why we're being conservative in our estimates, because I feel like you work too hard, too, if I can just keep talking here. And I want to make sure that we're adequately prepared to staff this, so that you all, the few of you who are doing so much work around this, aren't burning the midnight oil all the time. So you might tell me why, all that to say, why are you being conservative in your estimates? Because I don't think, based on how many times I've signed my name this year, I don't think that's where we are.
So I think it continues to be an unknown, and I think when you come to a board and you ask in a, at a pretty traditional setting, to be entrepreneurs, we want to make sure we're not overstepping that promise, not overpromising, you know, and not being able to come in with the enrollment. So the asks that we're coming in with are truly what we need in order to do this work, even if it is a little bit bigger. So I feel like, especially when we get to the conversation around regional support, I think that will help us be able to grow and handle that, truly.
And I want to be clear, that I'm also proud of this. My question.
I didn't mean to play you.
As a strategic question, it's that, is my pride enough toward this being an SPS project? I feel really good about it, I really do, but at some point, and this may be the inflection point, it may not be, right? It may be buckle in, because it's just going to get bigger, and we, but I think that's a conversation we need to have as a board in public here. And we may conclude thumbs up, right? But I think it's a conversation we need to explicitly have.
And I think it should also be noted that 40% of our teaching staff is not Springfield schools. So while we are carrying the bulk of, you know, the operational side, we have already started to branch out on the teaching side, because we know it's going to take our partners to teach this. You mentioned German. We don't have German in Springfield schools. So we're actually partnering with Rockwood School District to write that course with their curriculum team and hiring their German teachers, so.
I love that kind of cooperation. I'm thrilled.
That's great.
And then our students could take that.
That's right.
Right.
And so can students all over the state. So we do have, just as a reminder, three types of courses that we're offering. I wanted to give you an update on the enrollment in those. So we do have our traditional courses. As a reminder, we continue to be audited by NCAA. They do like to pick on virtual education a little bit, so we went through a third audit with them and continued to be approved by NCAA. And we've also gone through an AP College Board approval process. So our AP Physics course is one of the only approved online AP Physics course providers. We have a student from there who tells us, if there, I never would have taken AP Physics. So that's an example of continuing that growth. Our credit recovery program, you can see the enrollment of 9% there, but the area that we're seeing the growth is credit acquisition. And just as a reminder, credit acquisition came about because of Nikki Mantle. You met her, and her bravery created credit acquisition, and now 14% of our enrollments are kids like Nikki, who needed solutions. So every time I run into her, I always tell her, you're changing the lives of hundreds of kids across the state. So without her stepping up and saying, I need an option, and without us stepping up and providing it, we have a lot of kids who would have been lost across the state of Missouri. So that continues to be a growth area for us.
And we continue to see students just like her in those situations that we would have lost, but we continue, you continue to reach out, like Sophia.
Yeah, so Sophia's here tonight, actually.
Oh, is she here?
Well, she's back working, and there, there's a whole group of kids working here tonight. She's back in there. She's probably watching. They like to watch the work.
We mentioned you.
So they're here tonight, and there's actually a group of five or six kids, like Sophia, like Nikki, who come in our office and work at night, because to them, this is school. You know, the eight to three wasn't working, but we provided an open environment for them to come in.
And folks that are not involved in what the work you do may not see how we're working hard to meet the needs of those students, but you are.
It's great work. So we did convene a Launch Advisory Council this year to help guide the work of Launch. So this is made up of 43 member districts. We have two universities who sit on that, four organizations, including MSBA and DUCY, and we meet quarterly. So the work of that team is to analyze data, so how are students performing, what is their satisfaction rates, what are enrollment trends? They help us make recommendations, so what do we need to do next, particularly around our course catalog? And then they help with advocacy, so what does this look like at the state level, what does this look like as we work with districts?
So is this what I visited?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because you said 43 people or districts?
Forty-three school districts, so that's 43 people, plus two universities are there.
There's a full, you have a full house.
So, you know, we have around 50 people who attend.
That's a pretty big advisory council.
Yeah, it's a big advisory council.
I mean, that's what I was just, okay.
They're fully engaged.
That's right. We want to make sure we have representation from small, medium, and large districts, because they have different needs.
But that's what's changed, is we're getting, all of those are represented now, which means we're meeting the needs of a variety of different institutions.
Correct.
I love it.
So MSU sits on that and provides us with.
That's not why I love it, don't say that.
It reminded me, though, I was going to mention it. They do give us dual credit advisement, so what classes do we need to continue to build for dual credit? So our purposeful expansion of our catalog has first been around advanced placement courses. So that is an area that school districts cannot provide. It continues to be important, but you have to have specialized teachers to offer dual credit. They have to have 18 hours of master's in the content field, so it's a very specialized, you know, dual credit AP teacher. Our AP Physics teacher has a master's in physics and teaches, which is rare. So typically, that's, you're not going to find that. Again, we have a large foreign language catalog and continue to build that out. And then we spoke last time about our expansion to middle school. So middle school, particularly acceleration and remediation courses. Senate Bill 603 is a K-12 piece of legislation, so there was no middle school providers, so we wanted to make sure we helped fill that need. And then just building out our current interest elective. So again, big and small districts struggle with electives. So we run out of teachers, we run out of time to offer things that encourage kids to follow their passions, and those are areas that continue to grow for us. So I mentioned we're in 166 school districts, so that's now one in four Missouri schools. So this is what our map currently looks like as of today. If we were having this meeting tomorrow, I think we would be at 170, so we have several that will come in, that Tim will get to start signing. So this are the eight Massa regions that I've divided the map in, because that's really how we look at our membership. So you'll notice Southwest has 62 partners, that's where we are, and that initial commitment from Go CSD is primarily the reason for that. But I do want to draw your attention to the St. Louis region. So they have 23 partners, but have a ton of enrollments. So that is a very tight region. If you visit that region, you know those school districts are about 45 minutes apart, so they're geographically difficult to get to, but they serve a lot of kids. So Rockwood is a partner of ours, I mentioned Fort Zumwalt. Kirkwood was an original partner with a lot of, a lot of enrollments. Then we'll go across the state to the Kansas City region, which has started to follow St. Louis, so they were slow to start, but we're starting to see more enrollments. Those two regions are really involved, because truly, Senate Bill 603 affects them the most potentially, because they've seen the reality of charter schools. So they know the reality of a virtual charter school, so they wanted to be sure to engage with this. Those pockets of the state also already had virtual programs, so they were buying seats from for-profits already, and they were happy to move to a higher-quality product.
Who's your little buddy district down in the Blue Room?
I was wondering that, too.
Missouri geography.
Is that Cedar?
Hennepin County.
Oh, my gosh.
Like Cedar, Missouri?
We're going to do some research, man.
We have to get back to you on that one.
Bruce is looking for it.
Okay, I'm like, I can't see it.
But it's just amazing that we had a little district.
I didn't prepare for that one.
Of all the questions.
I'll know my maps better. So when we look at the map, really, when we talk about the support that Jill mentioned, it's about regional support at this point. So we know that we want to continue to provide high-quality support if we're going to do this work. Tonight is a perfect example of students in virtual education need a place, they need connections with adults. We, up to this point, have done our best with web conferencing and phone calls and emails, but sometimes kids need you to talk to them face-to-face and help them with an issue. And it's not always conducive to say, I'll be there in two weeks, and then I'll stop by and help you. So we need a place where kids can go to get face-to-face support with device, with technology, a place for parents to engage and get some support, especially homeschool parents. They need a place to ask questions with an adult who's running a program and be able to get those questions. We need a training facility, so I mentioned 40% of our staff is outside of our region. So this summer, I'm hosting training, but I'm having to beg, borrow for space to do that. And so that's difficult, because it's hard to set up for, it's hard to continue to do the training.
Where are you doing that?
So Fort Zumwalt has given me a gem to do the training over two weekends, but again, it's not a great setup for us, so that's a little difficult.
Nicole, you said something about homeschool. Launch is available to students who homeschool?
That's correct. So it's a way, actually, to retain them back into our public education system. So they re-enroll as a Springfield public school or a sending district student. The district then gets the average daily attendance funding back on that student, but they may never physically attend their school, they're taking courses with us.
Is Launch available to charter students of charter schools?
So we haven't gotten there yet, so at this point, I haven't been asked that question, but.
We do have private school partners.
We do have private schools.
That was going to be my third question.
Charters are technically public, so they would be available to join just like any other public school.
We haven't heard from them yet, I guess I should say. Private school, we do have a lot of private school enrollments from Catholic, for example, and then Greenwood is a growing market for us as well. So again, limited catalogs, students who like the benefits of those programs, but also want the benefits of public education catalog.
Are we keeping track of the demographics of the children who are accessing?
So we are just now able to do that, thanks to our new enrollment system. So previously, that was a little bit more difficult for us, but now we are, we will be able next year to track that a little bit.
That will be an interesting part two of the conversation.
It will be. And then again, finally, just a place to meet and limiting travel. So when you're on the road, in order to meet these needs, it's not necessarily the most efficient use of our time, and we think by staffing someone locally, we can better meet needs and be more efficient and do this work for the state. So you all know my passion for students in virtual education. I know that profit and loss is also really, really important. So I will talk about this, and then we'll go back to talking about students and meeting their needs. But we do know that financial stability is really important in this. And when we came to you the first year, we thought we would take a loss on Launch, if you remember that conversation. In fact, we thought it would take us several years before we wouldn't be taking a loss on Launch. So tonight, we will present you with our two-year profit and loss statement, and then our projected budget for next year. So our revenue comes from three places. Our members pay a one-time membership fee, so that is a revenue stream for us, and then they pay tuition. We also use SPS summer enrollment, virtual enrollment, as a revenue stream for us. So summer continues to be a huge area for us, and again, that's outside of our traditional ADA, so we're able to use that as a revenue source. Yes.
I think this is a reminder, membership dues are not rolling dues, it's an enrollment fee, correct?
That's right. It's a one-time membership.
So there may come a time when that number, you know, there's quite an increase over the two years, but as we reach our full capability, yeah, in our third-year projection, you'll actually see it go down?
Yeah, you'll see it go down, because we currently have 58% of the top 90 districts. So that due is based on their total student population, and we've actually seen a growth in our biggest districts first have joined us, and so the highest dues have already been paid, and again, you'll see that start to trickle down.
It's not a big revenue number.
It is not.
Relative to the other.
It's a commitment.
It's a commitment, that's right, it's a commitment. Our expenses, as you all know, mostly come in the form of staffing. Our staffing expenses mostly come in the form of stipends to teachers. So those are teacher stipends in our system. As a reminder, those are retirement eligible, so there's a lot of benefits for our teachers to join us in this adventure that we're on. So our total expenses after year one, you can see there, and then we had a positive net operation after year one of $129,125. So we rolled that into our year-two budget and came to you and asked for some additional staffing, again, particularly on the student support side. And so we continued into year two. You can see our revenue year two, our expenses, and then we had a net operation projected, and this is projected because we haven't billed spring tuition yet, but our projected operation net is $425,682.
The initial, and this is, I mean, nearly any enterprise would love to have these financials, right? So this is, this is altogether good. At what point do we, are you reflecting, I think the initial investment was $150,000 from, from the reserve? Is we paying the reserve? Is it reflected?
217 was the original.
Okay, well, then that number is bigger. Where is that represented here?
So that was projected in the first year of what we would be negative at the end of the year. We didn't end up 217 negative.
And we did repay.
Right, so we never went negative. We generated enough revenue to be positive at that end of the year. We didn't project as much enrollment as we generated, as revenues we generated, so we never, at the end of the year, cost the system anything, so we ended up plus 129.
We did not tap into reserves at all.
Correct.
So our projected, oh, sorry.
Staffing, are retired teachers eligible to do that?
They are.
Is that still under the 550 rule?
It is.
They're capped the same way.
They're still capped even for this, okay.
How do they calculate that? That's an interesting question, the 550.
So it's very complicated, and HR does it, and I will listen to it.
That sounds complicated.
I will say, as we've gotten into this launch, I stay in my lane, and I turn to my experts and know what they're going to do.
Partner for performance.
That's right, I partner for performance daily. So our 2019, 2020 projections, again, come from our summer estimates, our projected 20%, and then you can see we rolled forward staffing, that's part of the conversation That's part of the conversation we'll have around regional hubs and some of those other pieces as well. We still project a net operation next year of $647,959. So those expenses that we are requesting to increase, number one is teacher stipends. So that investment will only come if the enrollments come. So we continue to maintain a 33 seats to one teacher ratio. Virtual schools do not have to do that. So we've made that commitment and we continue to max our virtual seats at the same DSE recommendations of seated seats. So that costs us a little bit, and so that's that investment that you see there.
Is that too high? Is 33 too high?
So I would say for now, our actual ratio in classrooms is 27 to one, so we're actually a little lower than 33. If we took PE out of it, we would actually be quite a bit lower.
Sure.
So we are asking for an increase in a few support staff positions. So we do run a seven-day-a-week help desk. Right now, we ask our employees to flex time on the weekend to do that, so this would help us be able to reinvest in our current employees. And you'll see the conversation around the regional hub partnerships. So on the budget sheet, this shows up as a purchase service, so that is our recommendation for how we would move forward with this. So our first region we would like to look at is St. Louis, just because it is a necessary and immediate need for us when we look at summer enrollment. We would like to contract with Ed+, which is a similar organization to Go CSD. They currently serve 59 school districts in that region, and they actually have a facility. So they have a building that we could use, lease an office out of, and use their training facility and meeting room. So it would be a really ideal space. It's highly regarded in that region and has really helped to bring partners to us. So the additional cost there, we would recommend a one and a half. So maybe a part-time retiree is in that region who has a lot of credibility, and then an administrative assistant slash support staff who could help us there. And then the final budget item is just the additional software and supplies it takes when you add the staff.
And who would supervise that 1.5 FTE?
So that would be me.
Okay.
So by doing that, it keeps me in a supervisory role, working with them, training them, being there when I need to be, but maybe not necessarily being the frontline support.
Nicole, tell us about Ed+ as a location, as a location, as a space. Where is it in the metro area? How accessible is it, particularly to the individuals who may have access challenges?
So it's really centrally located. It's on Creed Core Road, if that rings a bell to anyone. So it's kind of where I-44 and the major highways all intersect right through there. Again, geography is not a strength or highway system yet, so learning that. I do what Google Maps tells me to do.
So do I.
But it is centrally located, so especially those districts that have a lot of enrollments. So we just partner with Wentzville, which is really close. Wentzville's the fastest-growing school district in the state of Missouri. You know, Rockwood's right there, so it's a really great location for us. And they also, they actually have two offices that they function out of, so if we needed to be in a different office space for a meeting or two, we could as well.
Yeah, I'm thinking about anybody who needs to depend on public transportation or anything like that, if there's access.
So how much time are you currently, I mean, I don't have to give you an exact time, but just enlighten us, enlighten us in terms of how much time you're having to travel to St. Louis, since that's what's being proposed right now?
So I'm usually in St. Louis at least twice a month, and I try to make those visits to, you know, two- to three-day visits. So when I'm there, we're gonna get a lot of bang. We're gonna visit a lot. Because of the geography of that area, it is difficult to say, it's not like I'm gonna pop over to Nixess. So it takes me an hour to get between districts, so I might be able to get three or four meetings in a day, stay over, and then do the same thing the next day before I head.
And are those for trying to connect with partners and/or provide student support?
That is simply, at this point, support. So that is not about acquisition of partners. That's about, not only student, but districts still need to understand a digital vision. How are we going to support students? You know, we went through those growing pains, starting in 2012. So a lot of it is how are we gonna support? What does this look like? And we do a lot of webinars. I'm a huge fan of the webinar, but sometimes you need this to be able to move the work forward.
So you're saying that not only is it taxing on you currently, but what is being projected in that area is not sustainable for you and your position?
And I would say the team in general. I'm not the only one. There's others who, when I'm there, they're elsewhere. When I'm in Kansas City, they're elsewhere. So, you know, there's several of us that travel at that rate right now, and so I think sustainability would be questioned if we had to keep that up.
Do all of our partners, what portion of our partners would you say are one-on-one with devices?
The majority. It's really grown. I'll say an area that I'm always really, really proud to say that we do is provide internet access. So that's an issue. But devices themselves really haven't been a challenge. I thought that they would be, but truly, most provide devices and most provide the same Chromebooks we provide. So for the most part, with the exception of a few districts that are MacBooks, we have the same devices, so that makes support a little easier for us. So I'm gonna go back to talking about kids. So again, while we have made this expansion, the majority of the benefits have truly been felt in Springfield. So we expanded an online catalog because of Launch for our kids. We expanded learning opportunities for the five kids back there, kids in our system that didn't really have opportunities like this. We've expanded our internal support. So back to Ben's second slide, it was me and three people trying to do this work. So because of Launch, we've been able to staff with a positive benefit financially to our districts. And I'll just point to teacher income. So our teachers are making more money because of Launch. We stipend really, really well, again, as retirement-eligible, and that's other districts helping our teachers increase their income. And I always say the 1.2 million we paid in stipends last year was 1.2 million that went to software companies. So that feels good, and that's good for our teachers. And then finally, that excess revenue that we'll start to see next year can really be reinvested in our infrastructure. So back in our IT systems, back in our local support systems. As we become more financially sustainable, it helps our school district.
Absolutely.
So what questions remain?
Okay, we've asked you like...
Yeah, that's a great way to end it. What questions remain?
Oh, what questions do you have?
Well, in some ways, it's not even a question. It's an observation. That last slide is really powerful. And if I have any frustration...
Can you switch back to that, please?
Yeah.
It might close, and then I'll do it, but I'm gonna try.
If I had any frustration, it was that this conversation that we've just had here that I consider really productive, we should have had this conversation earlier.
Oh, but Charles, I think we did.
In terms of, I don't think so.
I do.
Because the excess revenue available for reinvesting in infrastructure is...
That didn't exist at the time. This has all happened because of her great work.
I agree with that. No, but we should have had this conversation before we got a budget proposal. This is not on you. Please don't misunderstand me here. It's not on you. A budget proposal that did not include, for example, revenue reinvested in infrastructure. Had that been here on the front end, I'd probably quiet this entire time, much to everyone's happiness.
Although we may not have believed it.
Yeah.
It would have been guesswork. This is real, 'cause she's made it happen.
This, I'm not talking about a year ago. I'm talking six weeks ago, right? That, I think, is, if I have a point of frustration, it's simply that, because this is a strategic question. And like any entrepreneurial adventure, if we're generating excess revenues over expenses, and we are, hand over fist, and that strikes me as a really good thing, we need to articulate on the front end that we reinvest in our core business. And our core business, it seems to me, is in part here, reinvesting in SPS infrastructure. So that all sounds good. This is a powerful slide.
Any other comments, questions?
No, I think that, at least for me, my context string, is that, you know, we took a calculated risk a few years ago, and we took it one year at a time. And now we have data and financials that I don't think, or at least for me, we, how would we have known? You know, we were taking a calculated risk. So now we have some data to look at last year, this year, projections, that allows us then to have those questions of, you know, what next and how do we take that and reinvest that? So in some ways, I don't know that we could have had that until now, perhaps, but I think that this is very helpful for us to be able to make those larger strategic decisions.
Just add that one slide that showed 2 million something for summer in amount of money. Is that intertwined at all with Explore?
So that is part of, that's our Explore program, but that's the virtual component of Explore. So we just isolate the enrollment of the virtual program. So when we grew Explore and targeted it in the virtual area, really started growing in 17, 18, 19. That is the virtual component of Explore.
But does that money come from Launch, or is it part of...
It's part of Summer. That's the revenue created by Summer, so...
Summer virtual.
Summer virtual, only. The rest of the revenue from Explore pays for the seated courses, all the teachers for the seated. This is just the isolation of the ADA that's generated by Summer Virtual. And we isolated that to the expenditures of Summer Virtual, right? So to try to separate the two, so you see, this is the virtual versus the seated component.
I get that part, but I mean, I get that part, but we list these courses in our Explore.
Right, sure.
But I mean, this is a whole separate budget.
Correct. That's just a sliver from that, isn't that particular line of...
Yeah. I guess what I would say is, remember this if we were ever given a report from administration about the financial performance of Explore, which we don't get, but if we ever do, because it sounds like you're trying...
I don't want, you know, I understand they're enrolled in virtual courses, so it ought to be for Launch.
Right, right.
But, you know, then we count ADA as, while they're enrolled in Explore, it doesn't matter if it's in virtual or seated, their ADA.
Right, no, there's a little bit of overlap.
If me could get, I get this.
And that's why we tried to isolate it, so you understand the clear definition. When do we report Explore numbers? We tell you this happened in Explore, and this is how many virtual courses we took. This is the isolation of the budget component and virtual expenditures and virtual revenue that's created.
Yeah.
Yep, great question.
Awesome.
Anything else for Nicole?
So we kind of put this out for you tonight to make sure, number one, it's two years, right? So it's two years following up of the progress. And to Charles's point a little bit, I think, you know, on our original projection, we were hoping to still be crawling out and paying back, right, at this point. It's accelerated faster than anybody could dream. And it's accelerated because we have great teachers, we have a great director, and the mission is aligned with a perfect cosmic, you know, collapse with the Senate bill that requires all districts to have a virtual program right now. And we're the best show in town because we have it. It's designed, developed, and delivered by Missouri educators. The good news is, it's being done at a net positive to our system, to our kids, and to the kids across the state of Missouri. So we kind of put it before you to understand that we need to invest in the infrastructure to make sure Summer is successful. We need to expand and have a footprint to serve those districts. And we have a MOU that's up for consideration, not tonight, but the next meeting, that would help that infrastructure move forward, so.
I do have one more question. Do you wanna go first?
Nope.
So you know how I always like to know what the teachers think of what we're doing? Have we created a survey for them to give us input? Because they're the best people to tell us what we could be doing better.
We have. So we receive satisfaction data from our students, from our partners and from our teachers. So at our next update, I would be happy to share that.
Ooh, I look forward to it.
Okay, cool.
And speaking of acceleration, you have accelerated your accelerator many, many miles around the state. And so let us just take a moment to thank you for your leadership, supported by Ben and Dr. Johnman. But the countless hours that you've invested in this is, should be stated. So thank you for your leadership. And thank you for this update. Lots to celebrate. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, it's Dunklin. Dunklin.
Dunklin.
That's a cute...
Dunklin, that little tiny district.
They got another county now, too.
Do we have Carol coming up?
We did.
All right, Carol. We have, we have, our next item on Agenda 401 is contracts, agreements, change orders, and bids. Carol Embry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our standard process is for you, where you have the next two weeks to review the items presented. We have approximately, well, approaching 400 very small purchase orders identified for you, but otherwise, in the 15,000, greater than 15,000 to less than $500,000 area, we've got 34 different items, and zero to 15,000 on contracts and agreements would be 33 items. So a lot of purchase orders, a lot of work continuing to occur in the current fiscal year as we wrap up. And if you have any questions on anything in particular, I'd be happy to address those. Otherwise, feel free to reach out to me over the next few days and weeks, and we'll provide you with additional information.
Anything for Carol at this time? Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
The next item is 5.01, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions.
We told you they were coming. MSBA put their spring list for us together. This is 2018D. You've received a few of those last month, and we got it started, but now this is the bulk. I think we have a few more that might be coming, but this is the bulk of the review. So you have two weeks. Feel free to follow up. We've had administrative review, no significant funds or shift that I would tell you from the original MSBA recommendations. And you can always read their comments on, some of them are legislative shifts, some of them are legal cases that create the need to clarify policy. So please review, follow up if you have any questions over the next two weeks.
Anything further on the board policies from the board?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So we move on to new business, and there are several items. These are all first reads as well to be considered at our next meeting. The first one, item 601, is the nutrition services groceries and supplies bid renewal.
Ooh.
Feed the children.
Got it. That's right.
This is school operations at its most...
That's exactly right. And it's just as important as Launch, so.
You gotta have basic needs, Matt, before you can learn.
I'm sure if Emma was here, she would be saying this was the most important.
Maybe more so. I think you've got a solid argument.
So I've got two items tonight for you that relate to nutrition services. The first would be nutrition services grocery bid. Last year in July, we actually had this for you. You approved the grocery bid for Springfield Grocery, and with that, it came with an option to renew for one year, for two consecutive years. If you remember, that was the only bid that we received last year. It's a, because our accounts are so large, it's very difficult to get more than just Springfield Grocery to take that on because of their, the ability to handle all of our schools. So with that option of a one-year renewal, it is a recommendation that we bring that back to you again for a renewal for, this is again for first read. You'll notice it is not to exceed 2%, and that's all based on the Consumer Price Index. So it would be the recommendation by administration to accept this at the next meeting for the grocery and supplies bid for the 2019-20 school year.
Any questions, Dr. Shaw, at this time about groceries? Ben, you have the floor for item 6.02, the milk, juice, and ice cream bid renewal.
Now we're talking.
So much like the grocery supply bid, this was also presented last year in July at the combined meeting. This was for milk, juice, and ice cream, and the bid last year was approved from Highland Dairy. We did have two bids at that time. However, one of them was not able to supply the milk in the way that we needed to, which is every single day at all of our sites. And so we were not able to accept that bid. Again, this one comes with an option of a two, one-year renewal period. The price on this is set based on the federal milk marketing order for Class 1 skim and Class 1 butterfat. So this price is subject to change, but when those prices for the Class 1 skim and butterfat This, the price on this is set based on the federal milk, milk marketing order for Class One skim and Class One butterfat. So this price is subject to change, but when those prices for the Class One skim and butterfat increase by ten cents, it actually only causes a carton of milk to increase by point zero 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 seven cents per carton. So it's, it doesn't affect it very much at all. So with all of that being said, it is the administration's recommendation to extend this renewal for one year and, and accept the bid from Highland Dairy again for the milk, juice, and ice cream bid for the 2019-20 school year.
Any milk, juice, or ice cream questions?
The last time I talked to a group of kindergarteners, they wanted me to be sure and let everyone know they wanted more ice cream. So I'm glad to see this is on the agenda.
All right.
I didn't know they got ice cream.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, 6.03, is student device replacement. Carol?
So for you this evening, for first read, we do have the technology lease indicated as well as the information regarding Chromebooks and Chromebook cases. Bruce Douglas, our Director of Information Technology, collaborated with the purchasing department team. And regarding the Chromebooks, there were sixteen respondents in, in response to that bid that were received on March nineteenth. The lowest responsible bidder is SAI Tech, and the total estimate is one million, seven, forty-five, five, four for the Chromebooks. Additionally, for Chromebook cases, this is to purchase seven thousand vertical sleeve cases with handles. We had twenty-one respondents to that bid on March twenty, excuse me, March twelve. And the lowest responsible bidder is MOPHOC USA for a total of sixty-one thousand, five, thirty. With regard to the technology lease, that request for responses will be issued or is in the process of being issued. And we'll provide you with just-in-time information relative to interest rates at the second meeting where we will ask for approval for all of the items referenced. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions concerning student device replacement? Moving on to 604, Certified Staff Device Replacement.
So this recommendation is to purchase two thousand, two hundred HP Elite Book Eight Thirties and Times Three Sixty laptops. I'm not reading that correctly. I'm certain Bruce Douglas would do that. If I spit that out.
Kind of not going to correct the public.
So this is, these devices are utilized by our staff members. And again, device is currently being used for purchase in July, twenty fifteen. So they're on this four-year refresh cycle. And the total estimated cost is one million, nine ninety-three, two hundred. It would be funded through capital funds. And the bid that was left, the devices, the recommendation would be completed by Riverside Technology for professional services. And Bruce, I'm struggling on the actual, it's HP. I guess you just say it's HP, right? The manufacturer, straight from the manufacturer. If you have any questions, I'll be calling Bruce Douglas to the podium.
No, I, I do just have a quick question. So you said you did do the survey with teachers. So was it kind of a slam dunk on which one they wanted, or was it kind of a?
Yeah, over seventy percent preferred the small one.
It was, I'm sorry.
Over seventy percent preferred the small one.
Good to know.
Any other questions concerning the staff device replacement? Thank you. See you in a little while.
Travis, you're up.
Travis comes back up for utility easement at Sherwood, the old Sherwood site.
Yes, so City Utilities is requesting an easement from us. There is a telephone, no telephone, by utility pole, that is just on the north side of the fence between where our property sits and where West Sunshine is, so almost at the corner of Scenic and Sunshine. They've been doing some work there, and they requested access to our property a couple of weeks ago. At that time, told me that they, to fix this permanently, they would need to request an easement from us. So essentially, it is to place a fiber optic anchor in junk box near, box near this utility pole. And the main purpose would be to, for the distribution and transmission of fiber optic cable and other communication equipment. So essentially, what this is going to be is it will be a guide wire coming from the pole at an angle down to the ground that will come just on the inside of where our fence. It can't go the other direction because it puts it in the right-of-way on Sunshine. And so it's about a fifty-square-foot easement that they're requesting from the school district. About ten feet from that fence out, and then five feet wide. So a very small area, but necessary for them to be able to do their work.
Any questions, comments regarding this easement? I would assume that that would probably necessitate us to move the fence so that that guy wire isn't a.
A trip hazard.
Yeah, an attractive nuisance.
Oh, nice.
Right?
Nice, yes. Good law school word.
Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, and we will vote on that in two weeks. And the last of the new business items is the resolution for investment with Missouri Securities Investment Program. Carol?
Yes, so this is basically a housekeeping item. The Missouri Securities Investment Program that we often refer to as MOSIF is a facility for political subdivisions to utilize to pool funds for investment purposes. And you'll note that we've listed the statute that allows for this activity from nineteen eighty-six. I believe that in our school district, we began investing with MOSIF in nineteen ninety-two or something like that. And this is simply a resolution just to memorialize that, formalize it. And it may be something that we'll start bringing forward once a year. To provide you additional information, I believe the February Treasurers Report indicated we had approximately forty-five million dollars invested with MOSIF at that point in time. So this would be for first read.
So are you saying we've had this, but we're just renewing?
It's just continuing it. It's to update our documentation of our files.
Any, anything else? Thanks, Carol. Carol, why don't you just stay up there then?
I'll just stay.
And we go to 7.01, which is the FY twenty budget development, this time the bond and debt service. Hold on, guys, it's going to be a wild ride. Here we go.
So here is our journey, continuing favorite part of the year, doing the budget. So we remind you each time that we have these separate funds that we're managing, our regular governmental funds and then two fiduciary funds. And so this evening, we are talking about the debt service fund and the capital projects fund. You can see those there in the top of that larger chart. This is our budget development timeline. After we finish with this this evening, we'll move to capital projects reporting at the April twenty-third meeting and continue that journey until we reach the budget presentation moment, June four, followed by the budget approval request, June twenty-five. As a reminder, in our Missouri public school system, no different than most governments, we must have an approved budget prior to starting the new fiscal year that begins July one. So this shows you another view of the bond and debt service fund. You can see that relative to all of our governmental funds, they don't represent a great deal of, of funding. Tonight, with regard to the bond fund, we'll talk about revenue sources and reporting, the capacity calculation for bond capacity, dates and required passing percentage, which we've covered much of this through our facility conversations over the past several months and actually a couple of years. Standard and Poor's rating information, that bond and debt connection, and then our next steps relative to the April second bond issue. So always, our balance that carries June thirty to July one is a primary source in terms of available revenues or available funds for spending in the new year. And then anytime we would have a bond sale occur, then those proceeds are deposited into this fund. And certainly, interest is earned on that account. We do keep our bond funds in a separate checking account and maintain those records separately. And in our district, we report to you separately. Quite frankly, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allows for any fund for or capital fund to be collapsed together. And that's how we actually report to the state with bond funds and regular capital collapse. But we always take a look at it through the lens of maintaining it separately here. This is just a screenshot of what we provide to you each month through the monthly Treasurers Report. This particular document shows you the two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen A bond funds that remain. And it's the most recent one that was provided to you during the March meeting for the Treasurers Report, showing that after all expenditures that are encumbered and actually paid, we would end the year at sixty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. So very close to obtaining closure on that. As you know, there have been some mixtures in this current year that have been approved for utilization of the bond funds, including design costs relative to the facility master plan work. As I shared, that, that design work is underway. And again, that's focusing on renovating Sunshine, the new early childhood center, that new Delaware elementary. We did also code the land for the new Boyd Elementary to the bond funds that remained.
Don't you think you should have said that with a little more?
I'm sorry.
With jazz hands?
I mean, jazz fingers. That is just so exciting.
Yes, it is exciting.
And you just kind of delivered it a little flat there, Carol. It's a woman who's not the president anymore.
This is what we have to look forward to.
Just random comment, right? It's coming your way.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't suspect that's going to work.
I mentioned already, we maintain these separate funds, and we keep them in a checking account. And certainly, it's a capital outlet expenditure that would be a qualified expenditure with proceeds from the sale of, of the bond. So we'll talk now about bonding capacity. And I've shared with you previously that there is a Missouri statute that governs this in all school districts in the state of Missouri. And we do not have challenges in our district relative to bonding capacity. There are many districts that do. They do not have a large enough capacity, regardless of whether their local patrons support a bond issue. So fifteen percent of your assessed valuation is the base calculation. And this is how that is derived. Take our assessed valuation from August twenty eighteen, which is the best information we have currently, and add to that the estimate for the state assessed railroad utility within our school district boundaries, which is currently provided to us by Green County and estimated at fifty-one million. Then you multiply that figure times ten percent. That provides you with your gross bonding capacity. So you can see that that's five hundred fifty-six million, eight, ninety-nine, oh, fifty-four. You are allowed to add to that the balance in your debt service checking account, your actual bank account balance, so an additional just over sixteen million dollars. Then subtract off your current debt. And our debt currently is two hundred million, six oh nine. That leaves an estimated bonding capacity of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six, seventy-four, eight, ninety-seven. So as you can see, that is quite significant, well, in excess of fifty percent of our, or close to fifty percent of our bond issue that will be subtracted from that. This slide reminds us of those election dates and required passing percentages. And we know that based on our experience, we message frequently for the April second, twenty nineteen.
Are there questions for Carol?
We were just, you meant millions.
Oh, did I say thousands?
Yes. That's okay.
I appreciate the correction.
Yeah. That was the.
And I do want to just check one thing on the prior slide.
Yes.
That three hundred seventy-two million is our estimated bonded capacity now.
Correct.
When we go out and sell the one sixty, that will go down to somewhere north of two hundred million.
But we're still way below our capacity.
And continue to pay off.
And, yes, and as you'll see in the subsequent slide, we can, we continue to retire debt on that two hundred.
Right, so that number just goes, right?
But thank you for correction. I certainly did not mean thousand.
If assessed valuation is likely to increase.
Yes, assessed valuation, the numbers will continually change. We could update this every few months based on the best information provided to us, yes. Okay, so election dates, we highlighted often during the past few months that the April election carries a fifty-seven-four percent passing rate. And you can see that February elections for bond issues are sixty-six and two-thirds. We also have a variety of other options, including the levy increase. For that, it's a simple majority on the levy. And then if a levy is set at six, greater than six dollars for an operating levy, then it requires sixty-six and two-thirds. So there are rules in play, and those are all governed by the State of Missouri statute. The district's standard and poor rating, we enjoy a double A-plus program rating due to the Missouri Health and Educate Facilities Authority participation, and that's often referred to as Mohifa. And the district's underlying rating is double A, which we are very, very strong. This shows you some definitions behind those ratings. So this slide shows you a little bit of a connection between bond and debt service as we migrate forward to the debt service area. So voters issue or authorize the issuance of those bonds. That just occurred for us April second. The district will then offer the bonds for sale, so that's work that we're doing behind the scenes now. To be determined is how much should sell at this time? Should we only sell part? Should we sell the full amount? Much of that is relative to the interest rate that we could enjoy at this time. And regardless, however much is sold, we would immediately invest those funds through a vehicle such as MOSIF or other opportunities. And then we would start paying this for the construction work. So the district offers the bonds for sale. Investors then purchase bonds, and that then forms the loan to the district. We pay for the projects, the construction projects through the bid. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just curious, is the, is the icon, is that a ball and chain? My number.
It's a watch. That's hilarious, Carol.
That's what it looks like. It looks like it's chained.
That's funny. I didn't notice that.
That's funny.
That's hilarious, actually.
And Carol, you remind us or others that you work with who to help?
George K. Bond is our bond investment broker. And they will partner with us. They are the experts.
They're our consultant to advise us on all of that.
Yes, they will, they will assist through the sale transaction.
And they also helped us with the refinancing of.
That's correct.
That's a good.
And I have a slide in here.
Yes, nine million dollars, so, okay, so they advise us well, you would say?
They, they do an excellent job, and they represent a number of districts throughout the state. Okay, whoops, wrong way. There we go. So next steps on our April second, yes, we are continuing that work behind the scenes with our architectural teams to produce those bid documents so that that can hit the street. We will develop a drawdown schedule of the funds needed so that we can determine, regardless of how much is determined for selling right now, what do we need to invest right away? And I collaborate with our bond underwriter to issue those bonds. And we also need to hire employees to assist in managing the work. And so very soon, we will be posting positions for bond project managers and also some office assistants to deliver the work and make sure that we're able to provide very good reporting for you and for the public on how the funds are being spent.
And would you say that that is standard when something like this happens across the state?
There, there are different options to manage the work, but certainly, it's an additional workload in-house to, to manage. And so these bond project managers will work collaboratively with the architects and with whatever general contractor or subcontractors and work through all of those design projects as well as ensuring that the work gets delivered.
Because these are new projects for us, and our staff have to continue the work of the regular work.
Yes, not to be confused, we do have some project coordinators who are already SPS employees, and they work on smaller jobs, but certainly very important jobs, such as roofing projects, that type of thing, work that takes place over our four million square feet of buildings.
Carol, I, I had heard or seen speculation prior to the bond election that the school district was going to hire a Kansas City firm to manage projects. Is, is that, is that what this is? Is this the work that you're talking about?
This is what we're doing. That would be rumor.
Okay.
Yes. We, we are going to hire employees to assist us in delivering the work.
Much like we have in the past.
Yes, absolutely. So we're transitioning now to the debt service fund, and we'll talk about fund sources, those revenue and expenditure pieces, all of the refinancing opportunities, and the repayment schedule. Fund balance, again, is always a key factor, that fund balance rolls, just like your checking account balance rolls from one month to the next. When we cross a fiscal year, that rolls into the new year. We have the ability to transfer funds from the capital proj, fund into debt. So let's say that a district experienced all the work that they needed with the bond issue, and they had no more needs. I, I've never known of a district to do this. But it is actually required that if you have any money left over and nothing else qualifies or is needed in your district relative to the ballot that passed that bond issue that was utilized to pass it, then you must transfer that balance to the debt service account to pay down the debt. So that's a base requirement. Interest earned on the funds is another, is a revenue source for us. We enjoy some federal reimbursement on interest that not all districts participate. That especially became available during the downturn of the economy in twenty oh nine. And there are Sun's Build America Bonds, that type of thing, that was capitalized on very wisely. So certain types of revenue. So certain types of revenue would be available for direct distribution into the debt service fund. And most certainly, revenue is generated levy that is placed in the debt service fund that you approve each August. And that is based on a calculation provided by the state of Missouri, the state auditor's office, to set the debt service levy using assessed valuation as a primary factor, as well as the amount needed to make principal interest payments. So, this slide shows you some of the action relative to our revenue expenditures. You can see that we have mostly local support in our debt service fund. Ninety-four percent of our revenue in the current year is from local sources naturally, tiny bit from county. And then, we do have that just over a million dollars for federal receipts for interest reimbursed from those federal subsidies. On the expenditure side, you can see that principal is forty-seven percent. We have interest at fifty-three, and fees come in at one, just under one percent. We've listed for you at the bottom this information relative to the subsidies that are occurring on specific series of bonds. Yes, Dr. Leonard, you referenced the refinancing, and George K. Baum did assist in delivering that. We've reported on it often through our Focus Area Three information, but we just can't lose sight of the fact that we did refinance and save in twenty seventeen nine point seven million dollars, and that was without extending the loans. Bonds are typically issued for a twenty-year note and then repaid. We could refinance and extend the length of that, you know, it works no differently than your home mortgage or other financing structures that you might desire, but in public ed, and in particular, that was not a determining factor to do that. So, we did save the nine point seven million dollars through the refinancing of those series that are listed there. Bond issues also, not only do they typically get issued with a twenty-year loan, they have a ten-year call opportunity. So it's important to watch those dates and make sure you seize that opportunity. If the interest rate at the time of the call is a better interest rate than what you originally secured the loan for, that's what you analyze and determine if it's the most feasible thing to be done. So, our partners with George K. Baum, they watch that with us.
Yeah, that's great.
This show is scheduled by series. You can see, again, that two hundred million six hundred and nine thousand dollar total. And the schedule that we provide for you within the budget document and part of the recommendation in June does include narrative regarding each of the series and what they were issued for. And currently, our interest is between one point five to five point six six percent on this debt. This slide shows you that our current debt, basically by the annual payment amount, reflects that over a ten-year period, we will pay down one hundred and forty-four million eight hundred eighty-four dollars of principal. So again, as you look at that bonding capacity slide, that would continue to grow. Bonding capacity will continue to grow as we continue to pay off the debt. The schedule presented does not include that crossover refunding that is part of the escrow balance, and that's a whole nother conversation. But when you refund or restructure your debt at the call, sometimes you do it in advance of the actual call date, that's allowable. And so that money goes into a checking account. So as we close out our fiscal year, you see that we have money sitting in escrow and reserved for the purpose of paying off the debt. Okay. So the amortization is always evaluated each year and is updated, and I mentioned before that it is provided within our actual budget documents. There aren't a lot of requirements with regard to what goes into the budget, but this is one of them, specifically indicates that any debt service information should be included in your budget document. Any questions for me about bond or debt?
Anything for Carol. Carol, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, again, April twenty-third, we'll talk about capital projects. And I may invite Dr. Shaw to join me.
Our item is public comments, but before we do that, I'd just want to give you guys a warning, put you on notice that we are going to take a break right after this next speaker, just a few minutes to personal things, and then we'll come back. So with that, public comments, we do have a speaker, and this is a, this is for non-agenda items. Knowing that we have a speaker, I will read that the Board of Education allows comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes, and will be timed by the board secretary. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. This time in our meeting, to listen to comments and/or concerns for the public, but will not comment or engage with speakers during this meeting. If you have materials that you wish to share, please provide them to Mrs. Luton, and she will distribute them to us. We have one speaker, Norman Ely. Good evening, sir.
I know it's been a long evening, and I appreciate your full attention. Through a series of three- to five-minute snippets at multiple board meetings, I will be presenting the real facts that relate specifically to the Get the Facts Here document that you pushed out by email to twenty-one thousand fans, numerous more on all social media outlets about major cybersecurity issues facing SPS. These are serious security issues with evidence of harm to students, employees, and community members that are not being addressed. In SPS Get the Facts Number One, you stated, "SPS data systems remain safe and secure." Although SPS data systems remain safe and secure, an SPS employee became the victim of identity theft. This identity theft is stated in a Springfield police report, which I have here, was traced back to the Bentley Building and administrates the building for SPS. After SPS was notified on March thirtieth, twenty eighteen, that the Bentley Building was identified as the source of the, for the bank account, SPS changed their Wi-Fi on the evening of Easter Sunday to both the Bentley and SOS buildings, and subsequently sent out an email stating that new policies were in place for guests of these buildings. Why would a district that believed their data system was safe and secure have employees give up personal time on a holiday to change their Wi-Fi at two buildings within the district? Attorney asked the employee if it was possible that someone outside of the district gained access to the SPS Wi-Fi through a password that was posted on the walls of the Bentley Building, and sat in the parking lot for four months hacking into the employee's district issued Google Drive and personal accounts. If you believe that, I've got a bridge to sell. There was no doubt that the identity theft and security breach occurred. District attorney stated that sometimes where there's smoke, you can't always see the fire. In addition, one of SPS board's members often tweets out information related to school security, including cybersecurity. In one of the tweets, that board member referred to a reliable source that the districts rely on for K through twelve data breaches. The SPS school board member tweeted out the K-12 cyber app that reported SPS suffered data breach in twenty eighteen involving SPS's Google Drive. This was after evidence that the breach was presented and substantiated. SPS was required by law to notify parents and employees about this breach, they failed to do so. This is another example of evidence proving that the only people reporting misinformation and a potentially slanderous statement is SPS. An SPS employee was quoted in the Springfield News Leader that SPS is working closely with the Ely's of the Ely family. For the record, since my initial presentation in May twenty eighteen to the SPS school board, neither I nor my wife have ever been contacted from SPS, nor is SPS working closely with us. I will be addressing other cybersecurity issues at future board meetings. Thank you.
All right. As promised, we are going to take a break. Let's come back at seven twenty, that's nine. We're adjourned for the moment. With that in mind, we are going nine point zero one. Focus Area One, Goal Three, Midyear Report. Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are here to provide you just that midyear report around Focus Area One, Goal Three. Just a reminder of our strategic plan structure. We have four focus areas. We're still providing midyear Area One. This will be the last one in that series, and later in the next month in May, you'll start with Focus Area Two. Full data reports will be coming in, and you'll get the end-of-year reports in the fall. Tonight, Goal Three out of the Focus Area One is really about the four Cs, and we have two specific strategies in this that we'll be talking about that enrich student experiences in programming and then outside of regular traditional programming. I'll kick off the first one, and then Dr. Hackenworth will come up and finish off the second one. The first one is really about community organizations, private groups enriching learning experience with others to deliver the work. Tonight, you're going to hear an update from a variety of leaders giving you just a snapshot about what the work has done up to this point this year around summer learning. We'll have something around all of the above there, and just give you a quick snapshot of that. We'll ask you if you have any questions around this strategy, and then Boop, Strategy Three Point Twelve. And as you remember, we've reorganized these based on feedback last time, so you're seeing the new kind of alignment for the first time tonight. So, we will start with Mrs. Hubbard. Dana Hubbard will come up and talk to you a little bit about the first three items on the list.
It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for your time. And, let's see, do I have it? All right. So, we'll go ahead and get started with the highlights of Explore. This year, we, well, every year, we've always had three sort of guiding goals for Explore. It's the feedback that we received, as well as the questions generated from our Explore report to the Board of Education. And we decided that we would more closely align these goals to the priority metrics, and those goals were included in, in the paper as well. But that was something about, and that we will have measurable goals toward that as we move forward. So, we are getting ready to enter into the fourth year of Explore, Explore 2019. We do plan on having thirty sites and thirty-seven instructional days this summer. Enrollment for, I mean, opened on March fourth, which was a little bit later. We wanted to more closely align that to kindergarten enrollments. And as of this morning, we had nearly seventy-seven hundred students enrolled in Explore for, for the summer.
And that's ahead of where we've been?
Well, week to week, because we did start a little bit later, about three and a half weeks later this year.
Oh, so it's apples and oranges.
So, week to week, we are up about seven hundred students.
Okay.
So. New strategies this year will be implemented at the site level this spring in order to engage our, our most needy students, those that are most under-resourced. We want to make sure that we engage them during the summer and hang on to them so that we can help address those struggles that they are experiencing, especially in the areas of reading and math.
And would that be with, I guess, the first question is, what would those strategies be? And I know it's probably in that report that I haven't. But would it be tapping into our club encore students? That we are already trying to get to?
Yes, exactly.
To encourage them to then go to summer school?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, every one of our sites has an Explore liaison, as well as an extended learning program, an ELP liaison. So you're having those two work more closely than ever before to make sure that they're doing, engaging those students. So the students that we need for ELP, that Explore liaison is wrapping in, and they're making sure that they're targeting those students. And we are looking at building in springtime conferences for the students after map testing. If we still have not enrolled those students, we're wanting to make sure that we wrap back around with that family to make sure that they understand the importance of their child enrolling in Explore.
Do we do anything with A-plus tutoring over the summer so that that?
There are A-plus tutors that are engaged during the summer, yes.
So is this connection to the ELP, is that one way to kind of circle back and intentionally address that summer slide that we talked a lot about on the front end with?
Exactly. Okay. Explore 2019 begin runs through July thirtieth, and you can see the sessions there for a total of thirty-seven instructional days. And again, the Explore team, folks, is working very closely with the ELP team to support and, and provide resources to the sites this spring to make sure we engage those students. During the summer, we're placing our, hiring our ELP teachers at the very beginning of our staffing for the summer. We made sure that we are hiring those teachers first, so that we're getting the most highly-trained people working with the most struggling students during the summer. And so, those intervention processes will be happening. We have some new resources that we can use to help implement that. And then, again, we're just working with students, families, teachers, and the principal during this enrollment session to make sure that we're engaging those under-resourced and underrepresented students. And hiring is currently underway. The update today was that we are approaching, or we are actually just crested the eleven-hundred mark on staff, so we are getting close to finishing that. Last year, we had about thirteen hundred and fifty-five placements during the summer for all staff, so we are edging toward the end of our season. The next piece is Experience SPS that I'm here to talk about this evening. We had, this past fall, it was in November, we had two hundred and twenty eighth-grade students from Reed Academy participated in a new pilot that we offered through Missouri State Students on College Campus. And so, we were able to do that. That was a new piece for Experience SPS this year, and we are taking what we've learned from it and moving forward with it. We have also been toying around with the potential partnership with Springfield Little Theater Arts Integration Experience for third-grade students, and we're just beginning to kind of play with that to see what that might look like. We, every fall, we have had in the past years our Campbell Conda and Greener Green Space Experience. If you'll remember, Campbell Conda is for the fourth graders, and then, and then also Greener Green Space is for our seventh grade students. This past year, we offered it to six of our middle schools. And we do have a proposal in the works for this coming budget cycle that would increase the number of schools served in the stu, number of schools and students served in those. And then, we've always engaged with Springfield Fire Department in, in this way for Fire Prevention Month, but we are now, that is funneling through Experience SPS, and we're kind of streamlining, lining what that looks like for the Springfield Fire Department, as well as the connections that we make with our school. And reinforces that Fire Prevention Month activities, as well as some CPR classes that they are able to offer to middle school and high school students.
Is that new? Is that bullet point new?
That is something that has been happening outside of the umbrella of Experience SPS. We're kind of sweeping them in and connecting them. And then, we're just continuing to engage business partners and community partners in building existing and creating new experiences. And again, we take that feedback from all stakeholders to kind of drive what it is that we're doing and what's working, and tweaking those things that we need. And then, my last slide for this evening is with GoCaps. And we, in fact, had a, a great little showcase today at the Foundation Luncheon that I'm still kind of riding high on, and had a great reception there. And we are in the process of, this is our fourth year, and we are already in the application process for our fifth year of GoCaps coming up. We do have our evening showcase coming up April twenty-fourth at Mercy Hospital, and we would invite all of you to attend if you can make it. And that is where all of our students showcase their capstone on. And five of our students will present on stage. They will be voted by their peers and by the teachers as the, the presentations for the evening. So they will perform on stage at Hammond's Heart Institute. Earlier this spring, in February, AT&amp;T awarded a GoCaps grant, a small business development corporation arm of the chamber, and that helps us to be able to provide that transportation assistance to students that also qualify for free or reduced lunches within our regional area. And also, I mentioned the application figure, and today, we've had two hundred and seventy-four applicants, a hundred and twenty-seven of those being from Springfield Public Schools. So that number is up almost double from last year within Springfield. I'm very pleased to be able to share that number with you. And then, also, not every classroom can be a GoCaps classroom, but in fact, a philosophy of GoCaps back to their classroom. And so that's a big piece of what the teacher externship is all about. So we are already in the stages of planning that for the summer twenty nineteen, and we will be getting that message out to teachers in the regional area to join us for that. So as we can, we are winding things down, our students are still participating in some high-quality job shadowing experiences this year and finishing up their capstone work. We're recruiting for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, as long as there are seats available. And then also, our teaching teams will be meeting for a final time with them, and then we will sit down as a team together. we will sit down as a team together to then decide what our goals and action steps are to bring the next iteration of GoCaps for the 2019-2020 school year.
Dana, anything for Dana?
So the next person up is Kelsey.
I just would like to applaud, I know, your work on Explore for the last several years and in terms of the continual improvement and also what we've done with our teacher hiring and you being able to move up the hiring specifically as well as recognizing that we needed to coordinate that with kindergarten registration so that it was kind of a one-stop shop. So I'm glad to see that, to make sure we're getting those learners at the same time that they're signing up. And then, I've spent a lot of time listening to parents over the last few months, said over and over is they love Explore, they are signing their kids up, and they really appreciate the work and the quality of summer learning that takes place. So just wanted to share that with you.
Well, it takes a team, and we appreciate that feedback.
It does, it does.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm on our choice programming as a whole and what our magnet schools have going on. So we have been able to successfully identify what our current choice programs are within our district, and so those are programs that fit our definition of what a choice program is. And so for those of you who do not know, our definition of choice programming is an approach aligned curriculum with focus themes that's driven by their passion and brain and community connections. So we've identified those programs, we put them through their first quality assurance process, and so we recently just finished up our last program evaluation. So part of our continued work in that realm is going to be to compile all of these and just develop a better method to support those programs and just identifying and celebrating those strengths and also those growth opportunities. It's been a great collaborative effort with our Choice Program Office and those sites, so something we're very excited about. In addition to just big choice programming on magnet schools, and so we run the magnet school lottery every November, and so I put those numbers up there for you to just have as a reference. AOE, we have 40 different seats that are available to those fifth graders. Health Sciences Academy, we have 50 seats that are available, and then Wolf, we have 46 seats that are available.
One of the things when we heard about sort of this renewed product?
He got the chair tonight. Charlie, he got the chair tonight.
It wakes you up, though. It does.
One of the things we talked about that was really intriguing at that time was focusing also on equity of access, transportation, or other barriers may be there. Where is the conversation about that sort of statement?
So we are definitely aware that that transportation is a barrier to a lot of potential applicants, and so something we always have on our radar, you know, seeking out any maybe potential partners that could help us sort of solve that problem, but it's definitely a part of ongoing conversation. Unfortunately, it's a big part.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I'm handing it over to now.
Wow.
Let's see here. Yay, I just want to work something.
You guys have spent the day together.
Technology, we did, yeah. So thanks for having me. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I will tell you, sitting up here, our little bit updated, I sent this to Ben a little bit ago, so I have sort of updated some numbers here. So first, I want to mention the Foundation's annual Pickup Project Grant Program. That's kind of our version of crowdfunding. We offer that opportunity after our back-to-school grants are already awarded, so that's open to educators to submit grants. Those are put up on our website for about 40 days, and donors from all over the community and across the board have the opportunity to kind of go through there and almost shop things that are out there and look at what all of the needs are, and so they have the opportunity to make donations. And that has funded over this year, and there are still projects up there seeking funding right now, so still an opportunity to get some more grants paid out through that program. And then, you know, here in just a couple of weeks, back-to-school grant applications will be open as well, so lots of opportunities there. In addition to our two kind of regular grant programs, the found designated grants are awarded through specific donations designated for specific schools and also through the permanent and temporary funds that we manage. So we manage the endowment funds for all five high schools, and they regularly pay out support to student needs. So we've awarded almost $450,000 through those avenues. We also had a really good opportunity to partner with the Community Relations Department and Stephen and his team on the Learning Together publication that was part of 417 magazine back in February. So we were really proud of that publication and proud to be able to partner with the district on that. And some continued things that we're working to pick off our very first-ever Lunch and Learn, part of a new series that we're doing at the Foundation. We had Mike with us, and Dana and Karen Cuckle did an absolutely fabulous job presenting on GoCaps, and they brought two really outstanding young men who are in the program. And they also addressed our group and were wonderful. We had about 30 people that attended. So we will be inviting community partners, donors, potential donors, the whole gamut, alumni. We are inviting a large group of people to attend these. Our next event will be on July 16th, and the topic will be launch. And October 8th, 2019, and we will be looking at inclusion in SPS and what that looks like. So we plan to continue this in 2020 and offer this as a quarterly opportunity to keep our community plugged into what SPS is doing. We know there are no limits to the really cool programs that there are, and not everybody knows about that. So we learned a little surprise, we heard of GoCaps, but had no idea all the details that went into it. So it's a great way to offer that to our community. And it is scholarship season underway. We are set to award 85 scholarships to graduating seniors and several renewable scholarships totaling over $100,000. So we work with our students. We are working with them to possibly do a scholarship workshop for students interested in writing scholarships next year to give them a little insight on how that works. We do the same thing for teachers who are interested in writing grants. So we are working closely on those projects. We are also working with, the Foundation has some money set aside to offer, and so Nicole is working with her team to kind of determine what is the best use of those funds, and we're hoping to get that all set up for the fall. So we're really excited about that. And finally, last but not least, we are having just a small get-together for about 790. We are really excited about our Teacher of the Year Celebration. Jean Lawson will be our keynote speaker, and we also have several special guests, including Governor Parsons, so we're really excited about that. We're looking forward to another great celebration of Springfield Public Schools and glad that you'll be there. And I will just close by saying thank you personally for what you each do for our community, but also for your support of the Foundation. We really couldn't do it without you. I'll take any questions?
So thank you. We couldn't do it without you. What, so the new Lunch and Learn is a new initiative to help educate stakeholders, our programs, needs, and get new donors and all that kind of stuff. So that's new? That's?
It is new, yes. So that is something that was born from our Foundation's strategic plan.
Okay.
And we, through our strategic plan, we had a goal to increase our donor base and to really just increase knowledge across the board committee. And from that committee, we came up, well, we stole this idea from Missouri State Foundation, who does a very similar thing.
We still best practices too.
Bears in the know. And so through learning at kind of what they've done, really, there's no reason that we should have always probably been having an event like this because I was telling Dana, I've been talking about IV. We'd love to come and talk about IV, so there's all sorts of really great things that we're doing in Springfield Public Schools, so this is a way to just keep people more informed and also build some hopefully new partners and strengthen the current partnerships as well.
If you could email us future dates?
Yes.
I'd love to know the dates and the topics.
Yes.
And then, you know, we'd love to talk to you about, I could see community groups partnering to get, to increase the stakeholder group?
Yeah.
For the same outcome. So just something to think about in a future conversation.
Thank you.
My name's Brianna Kavanaugh. I'm the Fine Arts and World Language Coordinator for the district, and I'm going to be talking about the Kennedy Center Any Given Child Partnership, which is probably one of the very best parts of my job. We are kind of wrapping this for the year. We just finished up eighth grade and going to a dance performance at MSU, and we still have a few opera performances that happen out in our schools. And then we also have Inertia, which is a dance group from MSU that goes out and does kind of an arts integrated or this year, it's kind of athletics, relay athletics. Each year it changes, but they will start those school visits kind of at the end of April through May. So those are working through and going well. One kind of new and exciting partnership that we have this year was with Play It Forward, and we've been trying to find a fit for it. They came to me this year and wanted to do a 12 instruments of Christmas giveaway for our students. And what started out as 12 instruments turned into 21 instruments because that was how many students were recommended and they didn't want to turn anyone away. So, and Play It Forward is a group in our community that they take, provide them to students who need those.
Cool.
Yeah. So, and some of the instruments that were given away were brand new because they also take monetary donations to help with that as well.
Wow, that's neat.
Yeah. So some possible new partnerships that we're working on are with Plotline Film and Media. And even with Plotline has been doing some work for us, creating some videos around all of our Any Given Child partnerships for our partners to use for funding purposes and also to help reach our community and show them the kind of work that's happening through this. And then a partnership with the Moxy possibly, not sure what that'll look like yet. Along these lines, I'm excited to say that in partnership with the Springfield Regional Arts Council, we are going to be hosting the first of what we hope will be an annual Springfield Regional Arts Integration Conference this summer. And we will be hosting three teaching artists from the Kennedy Center who will be part of that opportunity at the end of July, along with some community partners from the Little Theater and some of our curriculum staff leading professional development for that as well. So registration for that just opened this week, and we already have, the registrations are flooding in, so I think it'll be an exciting opportunity for our teachers and then any questions about the Any Given Child?
Anything for Brianna?
Very good.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll wrap up this strategy. Brianna, my son went to Modern Dance as one of the experiences.
Oh, boy.
And he goes, Dad, that looks like, that's hard. And I was like, yes, it looks very hard. Because of the partners we have, we were able to provide some richer, deeper experiences for our kids.
Can we expect to see you in Modern?
Yeah.
That'll be the next review.
Expertise. You know what I mean?
Interpretable name.
I've heard a little bit about some of the cooperatives that we have. We just talked about the Launch Cooperative in pretty good detail. And it started with Dr. Jungman and a few, a handful of superintendents, I would say about eight, who said, hey, we should be sharing resources, we should be advocating together, we should be celebrating together. And so that has, that was a couple of years ago, and it went to 17, and now we're up to 62 school districts, and we represent over 105,000. We have our director who runs it, we have a learning kind of specialist who runs all the programming side. Up to this point in the year, they've done 27 different workshops around the region. The workshops are then sponsored by teachers, teaching teachers. So these cooperative school districts said, yeah, I have our teachers to do, host that event, and we'll charge them almost nothing to attend that workshop. So it's built on the talent within the 62, not hiring from the outside always to host that workshop. One of the highlights for GoCSD this year was they hosted Dr. Ruby Payne in Bolivar, where we had a network of people, and it's based on needs of those communities. So we've done a lot of youth mental health, first aid, they've done a lot of readers workshop, they've done a lot of project-based learning, and then any of the coordinators that we have, we have, many of them have led those workshops. The Innovation Summit, which is the key foundational event for them, and it's going to be May 28th and 9th, and it's down in Branson, and we expecting anywhere between 800 and 1,000 participants coming from around the region. Because when you're a regional partner, it costs you $20 to send some, get that people to their experience. And then Dr. Nicole Holt serves on that as our representative on the planning committee, and I serve on the board and directors for the region.
Can you just remind me, the Innovation Summit, the topics range from blank to blank?
Oh, it's just all over the place. So it's, we, but it's really about best practices moving forward. So we'll see everything in there about technology and project-based learning. We'll see how people are connecting or bringing services into schools, so it'll be a wide range of opportunities for teachers to learn.
And are our teachers able to go, do we get them substituted? So there are principals or?
Yeah, this is right between school and Explore, so we're in a pretty good place for to send people. Last year, we provided a shuttle down and back if people chose to use the shuttle, so we didn't have very much. The continued work for GoCSD is really around continuing networks. So they have, they'll have literacy coaches coming together for some networking, and they have tech folks coming together for some networking. Right now, we're expanding that to counselors, because counselors have an organization, but they don't always purposely come around and have elementary, middle, and high. We have, you have a teacher who's teaching welding, and it might be an OTC, and the next one might be in Monette. So how do you get those people together so that they can share best practices in curriculum? And that's a need that we've heard from the membership, and they're starting the program that direction. And actually, they just, we have is Step Up, our N R. Now we're trying to replicate Step Up for the region too, so teachers can have that support throughout. Launch, you heard a lot about Launch tonight, so I won't spend a lot on here, other than when these slides were developed, it was 163 partners, and as Nicole says, it's 160. I'll talk about the Advisory Council, because that's driving the work now. It's been in this room, and you have people from all over the state saying, this is what we need. So I love that that's shifting. And then they were, the middle school expansion is second to none, so you know a lot about Launch. Ed 21, so there's about 200 districts within the Ed 21 Consortium, and we send a team every year to the conference. Dr. Jungman serves on the Advisory Council for that particular organization. This is the team that's really helping us with learner profile, graduate profile, with rubrics, and we've been part of the testing of some of those rubrics. So this work is really evolving all the time, and what you're going to hear a little bit tonight is how we've used that work and applied it with Jay and Shannon's pieces. So at this point, I'll introduce Dr. Rubus Ford.
Good to see you again.
Again.
So.
It feels like it was a day ago.
Yes. So I'll be introducing the Strategy 1 dot 3 dot 12. Again, we're still focused on experiences with academics and focus on those live skills in college and career readiness locally, regionally, and statewide. The three areas that we'll focus on in our update tonight is Portrait of a Graduate, which really feeds learner profiles, and then college and career category. Content to you tonight. So Portrait of a Graduate, since we visited last, a few things have been happening along this journey. We now have a visual representation of the attributes that make up the Portrait of a Graduate. As a reminder, the attributes, and it's in your paper, but the attributes that the system landed on were collaboration, creativity, communication, critical thinking, engaged citizen, and then academically empowered is fundamental to all of the work that meets periodically. The focus of that work is really about how we begin to push this into our system, how we communicate these attributes, and how we give teachers the resources to make sure that they're able to focus on the Portrait of a Graduate.
Is that work team?
I'll have to look to see if we list who's on that team, but I can get you the membership of that work team.
Okay.
If it's not in the report. These two do serve on it though, as we connect that with their work. Also, I think what's been, our department, they've been going through our units to find where those attributes are present so that they can make direct connections for teachers to elements of the units that will guide them back to those particular attributes so they can ensure that they're covering them as they move through their curriculum. Our continued work, that team will continue to plan our system communication of this initiative. We'll also be planning professional learning that will accompany this rollout in the fall, and this will also ensure that we have communications such as a website. Um, and this will also ensure that we have communications such as a website, sort of connected to the Portrait of a Graduate.
So, when you talk about Curriculum Department going in and tagging some of that and that type of thing, would you say that, that the Portrait of a Graduate is more of a demonstration of what we're already doing, but, but?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's.
As opposed to reinventing the wheel?
Absolutely, yeah. And I think it's about being intentional that while we are focused on these, on these core academic skills, there are these other skills that are important as well and they're found throughout our curriculum. So, it's making that direct connection, making it public, making sure teachers can draw those connections through, through the, the curriculum. And then with the work that Shay, Jane and Shay are doing, Jay and Shane, or Jane, if you're going to put them together. That's the easiest way to address those.
That is going to stick.
You'll see that in the presentation. So, with that.
That's the only thing we're going to remember from the presentation.
Jane.
So, the Jay and Jane.
Oh, boy.
Well, after the stage is Jane, so, uh, so, uh, Jane and here to walk us through that and, and to teach us that is an interpretive dance by Dr. Goss.
Oh, boy.
So, um, just some great work. Some great work is going around, uh, on with our learner portfolios and some training, but a good portion of them, but all of them have a plan to be trained as we go through this and offered by the blended learning specialists in their buildings. All freshman academy students, so our Hillcrest student freshman and our Glendale freshman are part, this is part of their programming and part of your leadership class. Uh, students state that they are excited about the learner portfolios and there's some great, uh, pull-out statements there that we wanted to include on this one. Seventh grade Pershing students, I like the way the learner portfolio allows me to organize my creative projects. We have students out there putting their learning at a YouTube channel and sharing that with the world. Third grade Harrison student, I love this one. I like being able to show pictures to my class of what I have done and where I have been. They wouldn't know that I'm a world traveler without you things. Students go out, they learn something new and they're able to, to share their story with us. So, it's just some great work.
Okay, but I can't help but like to think of the other side of that, which is, oh, I don't know, back in the day, we might've sat across the table from one another and spoke of it.
Spoke of it.
Just a thought.
So, as we roll this forward, we'll continue the development and rollout of these resources, targeting specifically next year. Remember that we brought a plan for you, a three, a three-year rollout plan. Well, year one of that is next year with grades three, six and nine being targeted specifically for this. Mentor, that each building has a building mentor with this and we have a district specialist with this. And so that will go forward with the idea of, we are going to take this as a team to what we talked about at Leader Twenty-One and share this out with other districts as best practices. This is the Springfield story, this is what we're doing to share this. Plus students that were actively participating with a, and so if you think about where we'll be, end of next year at this time with adding grades three, six and nine specifically, we're going to go from seven hundred to seven thousand students that are going to have a learner portfolio. That's pretty impressive and so we're excited.
Portrait of a Graduate, now, the rollout next, or this fall, where are we at, this fall? Will be around, the learner portfolio will be around the Portrait of a Graduate outcomes.
Yes.
Because the past few years, we've just been piloting around the four Cs, but now you're moving into a more formalized.
That is correct.
Pilot this, you know, with some test teachers and buildings before you roll it out systematically?
The slow drip effect has been very powerful because we learned what worked, what didn't, what was meaningful to kids and students and what was not. And so, because we invested and made it a grassroots effort, we're, we're talking to move it forward as a system.
Charles? Do you see this primarily as an assessment tool? Like, we're looking at what our students know or is it kind of a, a representational to like the little third grader? Right. I'm a world traveler, I'm, this is, this is me and either is fine.
Correct. I don't necessarily see it as an assessment tool, except for an assessment of personal growth and what's important in their learning value. We want to give students a voice and choice in their learning and this represents that. And so, the teachers throughout the system and whatever grade level are going to be working with that.
But that's not the drive.
That's not the driver, okay.
Anything else for half of Jane? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well played.
Thank you, Jay. I am Shane. I also have my colleague Sheila Nguyen to help me with this work. She and I, as you know, partner in a lot of what we do in secondary schools and so she's, um, stuck it to the bitter end with me tonight. So, I'm going to share a little bit about college and career academies, uh, tonight. We're going to talk about some highlights and then some opportunities and then our continued work. So, freshman academies started this school year, uh, this last fall of twenty eighteen and they were at Glendale and Hillcrest and impacted about six hundred and sixty freshmen. They were in that, in the academies and they all took that freshman seminar course we've talked about. Um, so, a couple of highlights that we have found from the data, and if you're comparing the eighth graders from seventeen eighteen, so different kids, right, from seventeen eighteen to the ninth graders this year during the same time period. Uh, Hillcrest decreased from eighteen drops to three drops, which I think is a great highlight as well as Glendale decreasing from five drops to three drops in that freshman class. The next one, so the loss of instruction for ninth graders from freshman academy has improved when comparing again last school year to date, April first of this school year. Hillcrest decreased from a loss of five point two four instructional days to two point nine six. And then Glendale also decreased from five point oh four to. That includes ISS and NOSS together. So, we also gave our kids a panorama survey. Um, we also gave the kids, the teachers and the parents. So, a couple of highlights that I pulled out, um, from our survey to the freshman, um, that they indicated on a question that talked about bonding with adults. Doing freshman academy was about teacher relationships. And so, we asked the question, how is your bonding with adults? And, um, they both increased by thirteen percent, fifteen percent from the survey in August to the post-survey taken in December, so.
Of the same group, same, yeah.
Same kids, same survey, yes. They think their bonding with adults is higher. Again, that was a good question, that is the same kids, pre-survey in August to post-survey, uh, in December. Teacher responses on the same panorama survey, um, showed that Glendale High School teachers responded favorably to a question that we asked about student data. I should have put this in there, but that was just up a percent, so it was already pretty high from the beginning survey, but it did go up a percent, eighty-eight percent. And then teachers on the same survey, um, at Hillcrest, a hundred percent of them said they feel they are working collaboratively and sharing best practice. To go back, having teachers collaborate together about best practice. So, we asked that question and this is, this along with that bonding with adults was one of the best highlights for me to see. The teachers really feel like they are working together and sharing those best practices.
Shin, oh, sorry, go ahead, Charles.
Hillcrest faculties on the other items that you mentioned, for example, for Glendale, student data is frequently discussed. And at Hillcrest, it's working collaborative, sharing best practices. Were there differences between Glendale or between Glendale and Hillcrest?
There were some, yeah, there were some differences and there were a couple that were the exact.
So, bullet points are five or six teachers, right? I mean, we're just talking about.
Actually, no, it is the teacher, I knew that question was being asked, it was twenty-nine respondents, so.
We don't have twenty-nine freshman Glendale teachers and twenty-nine.
That were involved in the freshman seminar course we did. We had about fifteen.
So, those five or six people that we met with when we went like to Glendale, that's the lead team?
That was one team.
That was one team that we met with, okay.
One team out of five teams, yes.
Okay, so those, so that's twenty-ish at both schools that completed those surveys then, okay.
Yeah.
Have contributed to the decrease in dropout rates, I mean.
Or it's huge, eighteen.
I mean, eighteen to three is huge and, and so, are we, are we suggesting that it was just the academies?
I don't think so.
Or what other levers are?
I think it's, I think it's awareness of the dropout center data. I think it's awareness, I think principals being on top of it and communicating with teachers about that. And we've really had a concerted, this concerted effort led by Dr. Nguyen about even re-engaging dropouts and making sure we're tracking those, why are they leaving? So, I think that it all kind of, uh, is.
Freshmen that we, that you've identified.
That's right.
Um, that we've reduced them dropping their freshman year.
Right.
And so, that was something a couple of years ago that we talked about, instead of being reactive with graduation counselors right now with people senior year that we know. But this is a proactive mission.
That's right, that's right.
It's something to celebrate, I just, I'm just, I just know it's a lot of different levers being pulled, but this is one reason, this was part of the why.
Yeah, there's no doubt we've identified freshman.
Start with that and you try to maintain engagement and success. There's other ways and you'll see other things and opportunities for improvement.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so segue to that, so this is opportunities for improvement, so these are some data points that, that I pulled out that, um, are not highlights, not. So, again, this is the same thing that we're talking about just ninth grade attendance and it's different kids. So, we compared twenty-seven eighteen to eighteen full year to date, to April first this year. Glendale's attendance went down from eighty-one point six five to seventy point oh nine. Hillcrest also decreased from sixty-eight point one eight to sixty-eight point oh nine.
That's the ninety-nine rate.
Ninety-nine percent, yes, attendance rate. Similarly, the course failure rate of ninth graders is higher, um, which, which is interesting to our point about dropouts decreasing, but the course failure rate is higher. Um, again, different kids last year to this year, thirteen percent up to eighteen percent. Uh, well, no, because course failure rate, they're, they're higher.
No, I thought, I mean, I thought the Hillcrest rate was higher.
Okay, yeah.
Are there any comments, what courses they're failing?
Um, yes, Algebra One is.
You could have done that blindfolded right there.
So, Shane, when you look at beyond last year, when you look at three or five-year trends? One year to one year, but when you look at the past three to five years?
Yeah, you know, honestly, Lea and I really couldn't tell you.
Okay.
But I, what I, what I can tell you is that we knew that this was one year of data, it's just.
Not enough, exactly, of course.
We, and it's different kids. And some of the things we are doing to respond to this and I think we will see this data improve next year. So, speaking of that, I want to share a couple of things that the principals are doing. First of all, um, just recently, we got all of the freshman academy teachers together to look at course failures specifically and really, they spent a full day working on what are our, uh, things that to really prepare for next year so that we don't have this type of, um, course failure rate.
Have they ever done anything like that before?
I wouldn't say to that granular level, no. Um, I think they're aware as teachers, of course, failures happen historically, but, um, monitoring so deeply and really strategizing around fixes. So, again, similarly, some other opportunities for improvement, um, this is off the survey. So, Glendale, Hillcrest student perceptions dropped from the pre to post related to knowing the importance of not giving up on tasks, which is interesting because we want our kids' grit to go up, right? And it reduced by five. Perceptions, um, when asked the question about feeling responsible when students fail, it dropped from August to December. Frankly, not sure yet, I, I kind of cocked my head at that one too, I'm not sure where to go from that. Uh, but I would tell you that those teams, again, we met just recently and we, we talked about. Fifty kids, it's you and the parents in that community responsible when the kids fail. So, again, they were strategizing around how to fix that.
I think they raised their accountability.
Because I like that grit comment.
Yeah.
We do need to get some of that coming.
And we, and, and, yeah, we talked specifically about within that freshman seminar course. We need to double down on with kids on, don't give up on tasks, great, working through that.
I like it.
Couple other opportunities we have are related to parents. So, uh, Glendale, five percent drop from August to December related to students being provided differentiated opportunities for students who are on a college career track.
I was going to say, how would they, how would they know the difference between August and December and what that is?
Right, I, I think, I think, number one is maybe they didn't know what it meant, but number two, I don't think we communicated well what we were doing with their kids. We did a full-blown college career fair with over fifty partners and just an awesome day with freshmen at Glendale and Hillcrest that was related on. So, we need to better, do a better job by communicating that to them. Um, and maybe that question is worded a little bit weird, I don't know. Um, but anyways, I think that's an opportunity to communicate better. Hillcrest, same thing, it, it went up by two percent, but it was still relatively low, then twenty-nine percent said that they didn't.
And about how many parents filled that out?
Yes, that was, uh, sixty-eight parents, forty-eight Glendale, twenty-eight at Hillcrest.
Of how, and how many students would be?
Um, three hundred and twenty-three at Glendale and Hillcrest had two hundred and seven. Six hundred and sixty kids in the academies, we did not get a full data set of all kids responding, which I think is a particular one.
I would just applaud you and your team for bringing this to the, and shining a light on where we're at.
Sure.
Because if there's strategic action plans moving forward, then what, what good is this, you know?
Yeah, right.
So, so, so I appreciate the, the vulnerability and the continual effort moving forward.
Thank you, appreciate that. So, speaking of moving forward, here's kind of our next step, continued work. Um, college and career academies. For sophomores, so our sophomores will be selecting a pathway. And, um, also to continue to create those authentic learning experience within those pathways, Glendale and Hillcrest are currently engaging with our Springfield business community. I was going to recognize Dana Hubbard, she really has been, um, the key connection to our. Advisory boards, really speaking into those pathways, the curriculum, the experiences the kids will get and, um, advising us really to make sure that they're relevant to our community, relevant to what the kids will experience. And then we have nine pathways at Glendale, seven at Hillcrest, you can see those and, um, pretty robust. And working with business, uh, partners and it's neat, they sit right in the conference room next to me, just need to see their excitement on, uh, the, the new experiences the kids are going to be involved in these pathways, so, very exciting work. Okay, any questions for me or I think that?
Go to Nashville and see the academies and I think several of us did and it was great and really loved what I saw. I think we still have some folks in our community that are unsure about this and don't really know, uh, exactly what it means and the teachers in our schools that are not involved in the academies, you know, they're, they're not, uh, with freshman team or they're not.
Teaching these classes.
Teaching these classes. So, what kind of communication do you feel we're getting at in, you know, for that? Communicators then to the community, to the school community of how this is going? Because I, I still think there's some misinformation out there for folks about what this means for students.
Right, I think, I think I'll start with to your point, undoubtedly, there, there is a small. Or even if they don't understand, they don't agree with the approach and so we've heard some of those voices. Um, but I would say that the staffs at Glendale and Hillcrest have been involved pretty heavily in the planning, even if you're not in a pathway. For instance, Glendale, I know Natalie has involved her entire staff on Late Start Fridays and just dialoguing about academies. Fridays have involved their teachers. Um, so I feel like those are pretty high level of awareness.
Okay.
Um, but with that, there's still some that maybe don't get it.
And how are parents, I mean, how are parents communicating?
Sure, so, Stephen and I have worked pretty closely together, uh, communicating to parents. First of all, what the vision of freshman academy was and how this is going to be rolled out. We also sent some communication to all parents of Glendale and Hillcrest students about the pathways that were coming. Um, I think we did that through, uh, email to their database, I believe, um, and. That they knew kind of what they would be, uh, doing. And, and I kind of kept close to Natalie and Gary during that time to see if they would hear much feedback. And they had a few questions, which was largely positive for parents, that this sounds neat, tell me more. Um, but of course, they had one or two that were similar to your point again, that, that weren't sure. sure.
Process, because several of us visited at least two years ago.
About two years now, yeah.
So, yeah, just, just kind of wondering where we are still trying to get that communication out.
Extending on her point, is there a communication strategy? Because this is part of why we brought on this, was learning from past rollouts, you know? So I guess, I mean, I haven't seen it and not that I necessarily need to, but I just know that when we roll out new initiatives. That meets multiple, it's not just an email, it's town halls, it's these, blah, blah, blah. It's multiple mediums for our internal and our external audience. And so I guess it may not be a part of this update tonight, but I, I would like to know where we're at on that.
I think you'd see that in Stephen's. Kind of these main initiative issues, but that's 100%.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Yeah.
No, I don't want to ask Shane.
He doesn't want to ask you.
I've got.
Shane, that's all.
I asked the board, is. Do, does any board member think, do we have a, do we have board goals that are initiated from us, from the board?
What do you mean by that?
Just what, I don't know. A budget around what is bubbled up from internally, do we have, do we say all of these things? You know, I started listing, gosh, we have portfolio goals, now we got portrait of graduate goals, we've got, but are those, are our seven people board goals, are, are those district goals that come? Do those become our goals? Do we ever, as budget priorities are developed, do, is, does the board ever say, here's what, here's what we would like funds to be? I mean, these, those were just a few of the things that are happening in our district. So who is driving that?
Are you talking about something, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. We have our four strategic goals that. Then we see there's their focus goals and strategies and action plans, and from that, we review recommendations around resources to meet those four strategic goals that move the district forward towards. Then what, are you talking about, like, as a board, we need to be better at XYZ, the seven of us, or? I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Those, I think those are big, huge, overarching. Thing that cover all of many of these things that they gave us information on tonight. So is there, is there a time the board says, here, I'm just going to make this up because this is small. And our choice programs since Magnever Choice programs were developed. Does the board ever say, we want that issue solved because we want to move past that and we want. All of these things, but it really isn't, it really isn't. I don't think it is because we've never, we've never said that's really important to the board that we have these programs, that we solve that, that we want that issue solved. We want to focus on, we focused on math last year because of score. But does the board ever say, at third grade level, we want every child reading on grade level? That's, that's our goal, and then we have. This is where we want our resources focused.
My, you know, my, my take is, I think I would be careful about getting too operational. For example, you know, getting down into the weeds. In my judgment, board should not. Beyond, or at least we have not availed ourselves frequently of the opportunity to recast goals if we think they're different, et cetera, et cetera. And that's on us, right? And when I say us, I mean all of us, including me. And, you know, it's. With decimal points. And, and I'd like to get, not that I want to spend a lot more time, but I love every one of them, right? Budget preparation report, but I think broader discussion, even around here, not of 1,000 bucks over here, 2,000 bucks over here, that's. Okay, one thing I want is a better chance.
That's a board goal.
Take that out of my salary, I've broken this chair. But, you know, I am loathe to get into operational weeds, because I've. One of the really important ones that I think we probably can't discuss more than perhaps we have.
It is a more responsibility inside of what we want to get accomplished. And administration's decision how we're going to do that.
And to Eileen's point, the way we've processed that is the. And there are two strategies in those goals. So we function on those six goals are the board's goals, right? That, that's what the board has approved to tell us to deliver, to Jerry's point, to bring recommendations regarding early childhood expansion or extracurricular programming expansion, some of the things that. That could help with academic metrics, right? So that's what we see as, as a leadership team seeing. These are the four focus areas, there's three goals under the academic umbrella, there's one under the people umbrella, there's one under the operations umbrella, and then we added last year one specifically on communication. On strategy development, to your guys' point. So there are, there are lots of things that can get granular within that, but we stay at that level and then try to stay, here are the strategies that we're deploying on behalf of that, that's what we come, bring to you. And so your, tonight was strategy 11 and 12. So there are. Kind of saying here, the first few, they were around safety, then the next few were around extending learning opportunities, hitting those under-resourced, underrepresented students, and we changed strategies. If you remember, in the fall, said added strategies around those specific targets. To your point, the budget should follow that. All, we should see budget recommendations that drive some more investment into those areas.
You know, my, my sense is, whatever the, the answer to the question you ask about this board, and I think we probably differ a little on that, I will say, from having come through the campaign experience, there is a. Set the, the broad strategy of the district. I'm, I'm agnostic for this, for purposes of tonight, I'm agnostic on the, I, all I can say is there is a perception that that is the case, whether it's fair, whether it's justified, whether it's true, those are besides. Communication, right? And however we do that.
I just think we ought to be more purposeful to show that our input, our, what's driving the budget is overall. Getting that information out, that this information is just not coming up to us and we're saying, okay, 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 okay. Because I, I think that's, that is a perception out there. I want to see the issue solved and I'm happy and you, somebody runs out and figures out a way to solve transportation. But that's on a board goal, that's my goal, and that's not what it's supposed to be with. That is not.
That's why we have processes and systems in place to review all of this, yeah.
And we're more. Administration is bringing these to us and we agree. We're talking about that and we agree with that and we have a discussion, or if we don't really agree, then we can talk about that.
Yeah. Example, but I think we are all very well aware that we have greater need than we have resources available. So while, yes, we keep asking about just, you know, we're, we're still aware of the need of transportation around our magnet programs. So that. Look at budget priorities that are higher critical need than other requests. So we, if we had a magic wand that we're still looking for and can meet all of our needs financially, wouldn't that be a wonderful world? But we are for. Where, where are we going to get our greatest return on investment with our metrics? And we have limited resources that we are constantly looking at prioritizing those and, and making the best budget recommendation that we. Feel strongly about, to making sure that we have a voice, we as individual board members and we collectively. And I know that individually, we're constantly looking at all these reports and having conversations, and we do not all agree at times, which is fine. Goals that are constantly being adjusted every year, at least for the last three years I've been here, there, there's, there's been adjustment to that. So I guess I would say that there are some needs that won't be solved unless we have all the needs that we have.
I mean, one of the core responsibilities of the board is to establish that strategic plan, and I think we have a really, really good strategic plan. The one thing that maybe we don't do is maybe at whatever level that is, intentional ownership, establishing that ownership, which maybe we've done, maybe we haven't done. But the plan's there, the plan's good, the plan's there, the goals are there, the strategies are there, but maybe that, at that some level and how far down that ditch you go, you don't want to get too far.
Yeah.
Because that's getting in the weeds, but intentional ownership. And that's, that's just board ownership to me.
And I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think that's what the administration's doing. I think, I think they are aligned to the strategic plan. The board, if I was to offer critique, is, speaking strictly for myself. The fact that, the fact that, the fact, I know we had organized around four areas, but I didn't know that there were six goals, I, I, you know, I had to kind of think through that. And, and so, and we're getting, we're getting presented at our. Option at any time as individuals and as a board to call timeout or, or to throw the flag and say, wait, this is, we're, we're, we're going in the wrong direction. But we, we have voted on the plan. We have as much ownership of the plan as a board, of the strategic plan, we haven't taken as much ownership and using it as much of a tool as, as we could, as we could, maybe we should.
Yeah.
And I think what's happening is there are some outcomes that. Eye off the ball. And what we've got to do is look back at the strategic, strategic plan, got to look at the plan and see, is that where we're missing it? Is it, is it a flaw in the plan that, you know, our priorities off? Or? We may not be so proud of.
I mean, I have no idea how to accomplish some of those goals.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what these people are for.
Right.
Now, I may have a lot of input as to what those goals are be at the top level, which is where.
And if the goals, yeah, if the goals on which we have all voted, and we have, are not being met or served or whatever, we're not moving the right needles in the right direction on which we've agreed, what those needles are, then I think it comes back to us. But it's, it's not a function. In that plan, I think we ought to have voice and be able to make that case.
And that's what we hear at these reports, like the one we heard tonight. We heard about a whole bunch of things that are supposed to be driving some of these results that we're looking for.
And I think they're, one of the things that's really interesting about tonight is we got more of, I think as you put it, sort of the vulnerability. Here are some things that we need to do better, and I think that strikes me as altogether a positive movement.
Well, I think we got a terrific report when we had our, our report on diversity. I mean, you talk about a very transparent report, and that was what.
Not all positive.
Not all positive. So we're doing that. It's. We're looking at the focus area, we're calling it focus area, our strategic plan, focus area one, two, two, three, and four. Those are very broad goals, I could call those our board goals. But we called in focus area for strategic plans. So if we needed to change the terminology to help people understand. To be successful and learn, we want our teachers to feel empowered and be effective, we want to maintain financial sustainability, and then we want to make sure that we're communicating well and we're engaging our, our community. So to me, that's board goals. We've established those, like Tim said, okay. You know, how, what kind of goals are achievable and how are you going to measure those goals and how are you going to report those back to us? That's kind of your job. And these are what I consider to be my board goals, our board goals. I don't know that we need a separate set of board goals, but.
You know, call them the strategic plan.
Board goals.
Our board goals, so that people understand that. I, I just don't think a lot of people in the community understand that we as a board are, that's our job to. Slash board goals are really what the board wants the administration, teachers, paraprofessionals to focus on. We're not saying the strategic plan doesn't tell how, but the strategic plan tells. The focus of our district should be.
We have to own the strategic plan.
Yeah.
As a board, we have to own it, period. It is our strategic plan.
And, and I think our, holding the administration accountable for coming back to us with these reports, good or bad, is our way of. And we want better means of monitoring how we're going about doing this, and we've really pushed hard, and I think we've got, we've had some great reports, some long reports. Here it is, 8:30, we're still here listening to.
One of the things. We didn't always get both sides of the story.
No.
It was always things that are going great. This is what we're doing, and we didn't talk about those opportunities for improvement. I hate that. Ophies, you know, I know, but. Where do we need to be? No, it's easy to go here because we're, we're doing a great job. I mean, that's not difficult, but how do we get this over here, back over in line over here? Which is, I think even more important to know what those are and be willing to throw that on the table and not, as a staff, be willing to throw that out. What can we do to help that from resources, from whatever, to do this? I mean, that's even to me more important to know that we've got some work to do, which is.
And like Shane brought us one year, one year data tonight, and it's kind of like, okay, perhaps it told us something, perhaps it didn't tell us, but.
And I think hopefully, you know, as I kind of wrap up, maybe wherever you want to be, but the focus area reports, to your point, have been as transparent as I know how to make them, right? Around student performance data and the priority metrics that we've developed, and I think that's maybe to Bruce's point, what are the metrics, right? And the priority metrics. Thanks for holding our teachers accountable, our kids accountable, and you're holding us as leadership teams accountable for it. And they're the measures of the strategic plan. So those are all embedded in the reports, you saw some of them tonight. Those are metrics that you saw that are of the priority metrics and will continue to push those.
And keep in mind, this, this, this strategic plan was not put together by the seven of us, it was from stakeholder input for years of the listening tour that John did a few years ago, the listening tour that Stephen did, so this is. And asked them, where do we go? And our employee, which some people find that surprising, brought that back to us, and then we adopted the strategic plan based on that feedback. And number two, Bruce, if you would like for the board to go on tour, I think we probably could. I can set you up. I can set you up. Not like to do that, but anyway.
I just encourage, if, if, if you've fallen behind your reading of those reports that, that they put out those white papers, they are dense and they are, that, they're meaty and it's.
They're awesome.
They are.
We hope you read, we actually do spend a lot of effort to try to make that.
Speaking of administration, item 10.01 is the superintendent's update.
Keep it quick. Speaking of priority metrics, it's assessment season, if you didn't know.
Yes, I have heard.
We're down to six weeks of school.
Teachers are stressing.
And this is when their. So that MAP window opens in just under two weeks, I think, and will be a MAP, end of year testing, all kinds of other assessments. And from AP to ACT, you know, all the things that hit. So remind your friends and colleagues that to support your educators, support your kids. Information and will know assessment data in the fall. Teacher appreciation, you already heard about that, make sure you're there. Awesome opportunity to celebrate with our community and the people that do the work on the front line every day. So we can't wait to do. A couple of other things that are of interest just for this week, the community mental health. Where that'll be, but that's been a study done by the Health Department with a lot of collaborative partnerships. So looking forward to seeing kind of the results and recommendations that come out with that. And also, our questioner's going to be in town on Friday and hitting a couple of spots, our early childhood center expansion with Dr. Dawson. Model of leading advancement in early childhood. So that's going to be happening, legislative update. I'll make it really short and sweet.
Right.
Follow your book, follow your bulletin. Senate Bill 292 is the item to monitor and watch. I was there today, spent half of the morning with, meeting with.
A lot of dimes.
Horse trading.
Lots of dimes.
That happens in these environments, right? And we've got a long ways till the end of session. Senate was marking up the budget, so I sat through the Senate budget hearing. It's great to have Lincoln Huff representing us as the vice chair of the Appropriations Committee. It's also. Things fought that flawed charter law for 11 hours last week. And it probably won't be the last time that they have to do that. So continue to tell them, thank you for being a champion for the world.
Good for him, that's great.
It's been, it's been good efforts and we want to pat him on the back for those things.
But there's been a whole bunch of them already, so you better, you better be good.
Better be good. We have a few more things to say.
We've got a couple.
You go first.
Oh, okay. I, I, one thing I just wanted to recognize, this weekend was the PTA's annual conference. A lot of people there and just really, really good show by Springfield.
And you were there?
And I was there. And it was just a really good job, they did a great job. They did such a good job that Saturday night at their annual banquet. And.
I was close. That's, I think, they called the guy that was closest.
Excuse me, I don't think it's your turn.
Darn.
Yeah.
Go on, sir.
No one asked you to speak.
Jerry has.
One of the things he did, one of the things was did a Power One recognition team. After that, from outside of Springfield, that, wow, that was really cool. I wonder what, 20 people, maybe 20, 25, maybe.
Like Becky and Donna and all of them.
Oh, I mean, from Donna down to whoever was there. And it was just an incredible, to me, recognition of what those teachers did. Like was, John was awarded the PTA Distinguished Service Award from the Missouri PTA and the Springfield Council PTA. So well deserved for your work that you've been doing. And it's a nice honor.
Woo hoo.
And well deserved and.
Okay, and as it turns out, we're not done talking about John Jungman because Alina and I went on a trek, because none of the rest of you were available, on the 27th of March, which feels longer ago than it really was. So. Was recognized as the 2019 Robert L. Pierce Award from the Missouri Association of School Administrators selected John, our superintendent, as the recipient for the 2019 Robert L. Pierce Award. His peers. He was the 33rd recipient of the prestigious award from, among nominees from eight different districts. It was a huge room full of people. I got to tell you, I liked being there to support. A lot of fun and another great honor. I know you don't like talking about that, but, you know, when we hear all these complaints about what we're doing here, let's remember that the people who do the same kind of work selected him to be honored in this way. And it was super cool that we got to be there.
Just add that it was great to honor Carrie and your three girls who, because of the nature of your job and the demand of you being in Jeff City and being across this district, it was nice for them to see you being recognized for your hard work. But also others, you know, knowing the contribution that they bring to you. And so we are thankful, we're thankful for that.
Awesome, awesome.
Any other board comments? I'll.
We're all going to say that.
Oh, you always say that part's not over.
Publicly. Well, that's what I was going to say. We look forward to you keeping things interesting.
That's right.
But especially, I want to just thank you for all the behind the scenes work as, as your vice president. I. District, advocating for kids, advocating for teachers. You are solid as a dang church. You are just, the, the work you do is just phenomenal and I'm grateful for it. So, thank you. It's been a good year.
That's right.
Some presentations, that ought to be fascinating. We'll see you at the teacher appreciation banquet. Next time, we'll probably have more. We'll also talk a little bit, probably at the next meeting or maybe the study session about some, after Alina and I get a chance to meet as often. We covered strategic plan and a lot of stuff in between. Study sessions probably by definition should be a little bit longer than the board meeting. We'll try to set up for two weeks from now, have a board meeting that will try to make up some of this time, but we ain't going to make up all of it. Important for us, Jerry?
A meeting, I just want to.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be your next, the 23rd.
Okay.
And so I would normally wait until then.
Well, we'll just cancel it.
Okay.
I love your presidency.
On April 25th, the Governor's Task Force on School Safety will be in Springfield. It just came out this, this week, the date confirmed. But I would just encourage you to, to come and participate, listen, whatever on, it's the Glendale at 3:30 on Thursday to 25th.
And will Kathy please send that out as a reminder?
I will get it to Kathy. I will get it to Kathy. First conference, Task Force is the 25th, at 3:30.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have time to go to the.
All right.
Tim?
Yeah.
Are we going to mention anything about that little event on April 2nd?
I have it on April 2nd.
Woo. Celebrate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, it's true, we have not accepted the, the actual vote yet.
Okay, well then we're going to celebrate.
I accept.
Spending money.
We'll celebrate then.
But, yeah, it's. You did triple duty as a board member, as a board candidate, and then the incredible work you guys did with, with the, the friends group. Incredible, thank you.
All star.
Wow. What would have happened if the vote had been different? And how this community might change. I am, I have high expectations for what happens in our community as a result of the vote that we did get. And so, thank you voters. Plus Delta to Kathy on, on the way out.
Don't put it on the blank wall.
The board, the board is gone.
Yeah.
We're cleaning up the boardroom. And plus, and, and so just give your plus deltas to Kathy. And we do have an executive. That the board conduct an executive session following the meeting to discuss legal real estate personnel, collective bargaining and audit matters as provided in section 610.02, subsections 1, 2. And there's our, here's the motion and the second. Thank you.
And just go ahead and put me down for an I, since I already logged off.
She logged herself off by accident.
Bye.